Good afternoon, everyone. It's 5:30, so we want to make sure we get started on time. Welcome. Great to see you, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led by members of the Cesar Chavez Middle School Cadet Corps. Can we please all rise?
Present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms.
All righty. Thank you to our cadets over at Cesar Chavez Middle School. Great job. We'll move on to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Solon.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. So we have two items. The first, 10.3, the 45-day budget revision for the lottery funding. We have an amendment in the amount of should read 9 million, the revised amount should read 9,736,665, and this was a result of a computation error. And then the second item, 11.7, we are going to pull that item, which is a bid award for filters, air cond- HVAC filters, and so we will be bringing that back to the board once the information is amended and corrected.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote on agenda as amended. All right, agenda carries. We'll move on to 1.4, inspirational message by Dr. Barbara Flores.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Today's inspirational message comes from Dr. Angelis Arien, anthropologist, acclaimed anthropologist, from her book, "Living in Gratitude." She was an incredible anthropologist and studied many, many cultures throughout the world. She's deceased now, but this particular book, "Living in Gratitude", is very uplifting, and I'd like to read, I'm going to be quoting her, and then reading some proverbs and sayings from different cultures on gratitude. So gratitude, the application of multicultural wisdom, the shared values and inherent positive beliefs of humanity has become known as perennial wisdom. Perennial wisdom has been passed on from generation to generation since the birth of humankind. It continues to surface among diverse peoples, unconnected by geography or language, yet inextricably linked to what is inherently important in our shared experience of what it means to be a human. Of all the universal themes that have been transmitted through perennial wisdom, the expression of gratitude continues to be the glue that consistently holds society and relations together. Its opposite is ingratitude, contributes to societal dissolution and separation. The expression of gratitude is essential to humankind's sustainability and survival. Gratitude's stabilizing and healing effects, which have been researched from multiple standpoints, have made it abundantly clear that the benefits of living a grateful life are irrefutable. If gratitude is a state of being that is essential to a life well-lived, why then do we not cultivate and express it on a daily basis? After all, giving thanks and expressing appreciation for the blessings and gifts of life is a natural human response. Perhaps the key reason we do not make gratitude a part of our daily lives is that of the accelerated pace and the multiple distractions of modern life that have simply made it all too easy to forget gratitude's importance. Through conscious and sustained practice over a period of time, we can discover again how gratitude and all its related qualities, such as thankfulness, appreciation, compassion, generosity, grace, and so many other positive states can become integrated and embodied in our lives. What is gratitude? Every language in the world has a way of saying thank you. The Latin root of the word gratitude is grata or gracia, a given gift, and from this same root, we get our word grace, which means a gift freely given that is unearned. Gratitude is a feeling that spontaneously emerges from within. However, it is not simply an emotional response. It is also a choice to make. We can choose to be grateful, or we can choose to be ungrateful, to take our gifts and blessings for granted. As a choice, gratitude is an attitude or a disposition. As writer Alexis de Tocaville once described it, gratitude is a habit of the heart. We can express thanks in words spoken or written in our deeds, by extending time, resources, or gifts to support people in unexpected ways or to help those in need. Appreciation is the recognition of that which makes us feel grateful and can be expressed internally or externally. Gratitude often ignites acts of generosity. We are moved to offer ourselves to others without expecting anything in return. And now I'm going to read a few sayings. This is a Mexican dicho, a saying. Es mejor dar que recibir y no esperar recompensa. It's better to give than receive and not expect anything in return. Maya Angelou, if you must look back, do so forgivingly. If you must look forward, do so prayerfully. However, the wisest thing you can do is to be present in the present gratefully. And this is from Chief Dan George. May the stars carry your sadness away. May the flowers fill your heart with beauty. May hope forever wipe away your tears. And above all, may silence make you strong. Here is a Chinese, two Chinese proverb, proverbs. Begin each day with a grateful heart. Also cherish others, kindness at heart, and pay back the flavor, the favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. All right, we'll move on to 2.0, resolutions, recognitions, or special presentations. We'll look at 2.1, resolution and recognition of Public Schools Month, and that will be Dr. Dottie Rogers.
Is it the 2.1 attendance? Or do you want me to do, you want me to go to?
All right, I apologize. Let me read that again. All right, 2 point, oop, my screen just moved on me. 2.1 is resolution and recognition of attendance awareness month. And let me double check. Yes, it is Dr. Dottie Rogers. Thank you.
Whereas good attendance is essential for student achievement and developing the habit of regular attendance prepares students to succeed from cradle to career. And whereas chronic absenteeism impacts low-income students and children with special needs, particularly hard if they lack resources to make up for lost time in a classroom. And whereas chronic absences can be significantly reduced when schools, parents, faith-based organizations, businesses, community leaders, and elected officials work together to promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. And whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District dedicates resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism and is partnering with families, parents, and school leaders to make attendance a top priority for raising awareness and establishing targets and goals to ensure accountability. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education, San Bernardino City Unified School District, recognizes September 2022 as Attendance Awareness Month. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education recognizes that greater attention is needed to improve student attendance and hereby commits to reducing chronic absenteeism to give children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially.
Moved.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 2.2, resolution and recognition of Public Schools Month, and that will be Ms. Rosales Medina.
President, Dr. Wyatt. Whereas Public Schools Month has been sponsored and promoted by Free and Accepted Masons of California for more than a century in recognition of the value of public education. And whereas concern for the common good and well-being of all citizens in one of the highest virtues of American democracy and generations ago, our ancestors recognized the importance of the virtue by creating the public school system. And whereas public school, whereas public schools are responsible not only for sound instructional programs that prepare and equip our youth to have productive lives as adults, but also for installing in our children a love of freedom and appreciation for the benefits of living in a democratic society. And whereas our, with organizations, with organizations such as Masons and with community supports throughout California, public schools can ensure that students have equal access to learning and a safe and healthy environment in which to grow. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District joins the Free and Accepted Masons of California and school districts across the state in declaring the month of September 2022 to be the Public Schools Month and acknowledging the important role of public education in developing students educationally and socially.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Flores?
So here is a way to practice gratitude. We thank the Masons and all community organizations for the wisdom to invest in public education. And we truly have one of the best public educations in the world and also in the state of California.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Any other discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Move on to 2.3, resolution and recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Dr. Barbara Flores.
Thank you, President Wyatt. Whereas the period from September 15th through October 15th, officially known as the National Hispanic Heritage Month, is a time to honor the many historical and modern contributions of Hispanic and Latino-Americans. And whereas those dates coincide with important events in Latin American history, including the September 15th anniversary of the independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua; the September 16th anniversary of Mexico's independence; and the September 18th anniversary of Chile's independence. And whereas Hispanic and Latino-Americans share ancestry and cultural ties with Mexico, Central and South America, the Caribbean, Cuba, and Spain, and this diversity has brought invaluable perspectives, experiences, and values to the district. And whereas Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, is the 2022 theme of the National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas the district celebrates the vibrant Latin American spirit that influences our nation and also recognizes the practices of commitment to family, love of country, and respect for others, which are virtues that transcend ethnicity, reflect the American spirit, and are exemplified in the Hispanic and Latino-American communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins towns and cities in our state and our nation in recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month and directs the appropriate activities for celebrating Hispanic and Latino-American heritage and the culture take place in our district.
Moved. Second. Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 2.4, resolution and recognition of JAC 6 de Septiembre, and that will be Ms. Maris Salas.
Thank you, Board President. Good evening. Whereas 16 de Septiembre, more commonly known as Mexico's Independence Day, commemorates the interaction that led to Mexico's separation from Spain. And whereas it is an important date in the history of Mexico that marks the anniversary of the issuance of the Grito de Dolores, in which Father Miguel Hidalgo defied Spain and called for freedom and justice for the common man. And whereas this date of historical significance for the Mexican people and others of Latin American ancestry is celebrated by many members of this community, including students of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares September 16th, 2022, 16 de Septiembre, and directs appropriate activities for its observance in district schools. So moved.
Second. Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 2.5, resolution and support of AB 2774, Education Finance LCFF Supplemental Grants Lowest Performing People Subgroups or Subgroup or Subgroups. Mr. Vice President, Danny Tillman.
Thank you, President, Dr. Wyatt. Whereas the Local Control Funding Formula was enacted in 2013 and was designed to be a more equitable system of funding with the goal of providing additional funding for the highest-need students. Base grants, concentration grants, and supplemental grants were created to provide additional funding and accountability to school districts and charter schools to provide extra support for high-need students. And whereas the subgroups of students currently receiving extra support include English-language learners, low-income students, and foster homeless youth. And whereas 2019 statewide testing data shows that African-American students are the lowest-performing subgroup with 67% not meeting English-language arts standards and 79% not meeting math standards. And whereas African-American students have the highest suspension rate of any subgroup at 8.8%. They also have the lowest high-school graduation rate at 76.8%. These students are not being given enough academic support and equitable goals of Local Control Funding Formula are not being met. And whereas Assembly Bill 2774 would create a new supplemental grant in the Local Control Funding Formula for the lowest-performing subgroups of students not currently receiving funds, currently unfunded African-American students, this would ensure that every African-American student within the state is generating additional supplemental funding to the public schools that serve them, thereby providing resources to increase their academic performance. And whereas Assembly Bill 2774 would additionally ensure that school districts and charter schools throughout the state are being held accountable to provide additional services and improve academic performance among African-American students as they will have to describe how they will assist these high-need students in their annual Local Control Accountability Plan. Whereas Assembly Bill 2774, if funded, would generate approximately $400 million for school districts and charter schools across the state to provide critically-needed academic support for African-American students. Whereas it is time for California to fix this fundamental flaw in the Local Control Funding Formula and ensure that all students in need of additional support receive it. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby supports Assembly Bill 2774. So moved.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Dottie Rogers?
Thank you. I did want to report, you know, although there were a number of school districts that were able to get out a little bit ahead of us on this, individuals, but I think it was last Thursday, they had the hearing, and it has went, it's went further than it's ever been. It is now in the Senate's hand, and we do have our, two of our senators that were in support. And we're happy and grateful for Connie Leva, as well as Achoa Bo, took the time to listen and hear the need. And it's in the Senate right now.
Thank you, Dr. Dottie Rogers. Dr. Flores?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Here's another place where we should be grateful for the additional funds to support our African-American students. We've been on a road to doing that, but we need to do more. And I think with the multi-tiered plan that our cabinet has presented us, I think we'll be able to not only monitor them, but advance them in those. And I'm anxious to see how we implement all of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Any other discussion or comments? All right, let's go ahead and vote. This one? All right, sorry about that. Motion carries. I wasn't sure what was going on over here. All right. 3.1, receive public comments, or 2.0, public comments. 3.1, receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject-matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. We'll move to our first public comment. And I do apologize on the last name on this one here. I can't read it. It's Jerry Roberto Valle? Is that correct? Or do I have that wrong? I'm sorry if I have that wrong. Oh, Roberson. All right. Sorry, Mr. Roberson. Come on up. Thank you.
You guys probably remember me from about two weeks ago. And I would like to say, I would like to thank Sam, who's the administrator of operations, and also Mike, who went out of their way to take care of the problem on Leroy. He's changed an lock on Leroy Street, which means they'll have to go around where they're supposed to park. And he wrote a notification at the cabinets, was informed of the board, and a group was given to the parents, and they discussed all that. I saw Mike, or I don't know if I saw Mike. I saw the group up there talking in the parking lot where they need to park. And this is like about 6:30, quarter to 7:00 last night. So they have gone out of their way, and I thank them very much for what they did. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. We always like hearing those comments. Any questions? Dr. Flores?
You're an epitome of my inspiration today in coming forth and giving gratitude and thanks. So, yeah, my grandma always said, if you don't speak up, God won't hear you. Or we won't hear you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Our next public speaker is Mr. Gil Navarro. Welcome.
Nice remodel job. Good evening, Board President, Board members. Anna Applegate, Assistant Superintendent, I guess interim superintendent. My name's Gil Navarro. I'm an education advocate. Federal regulations actually have another term for me, non-attorney representative. You know, I'm here this evening to sadly have to report concerns that have developed with your board member, Dr. Gwen. And on the website for Young Women's, it's hard to read this writing, Young Women's Foundation. Then on the website, and I gave each of the board members a copy, it has the San Bernardino City Unified District on it. So I guess the assumption is they're supporting it. And also the San Bernardino City Unified Parent Advisory Councils, they're supporting it. And then again, the San Bernardino City Unified School District, again, under Educational Resource Links. But I think what's really sad is it appears, obviously, a conflict of interest because on your agenda this evening of 11.19 is a renewal of the agreement with the Young Women's Empowerment Foundation for $15,000. And it's very obvious, in my opinion, that there could be an area where her position, sitting on the board as a voting member, could be influencing a board member's approval of this $15,000, where obviously it should never have been on the agenda for Ms. Rogers to be able to vote on it. And this is renewed, so apparently this has been going on for a couple of years. And it's sad that some board members want to be elected in order to reap financial benefits from an institution that they are supposed to serve for one focus, the children, the students. So, I mean, there's no reason to put in money from the school district that if you're a board member. a board member, you know, it's clearly a conflict of interest. And I'm asking that this board vote no, because what you're doing, you're sending approval if you do support this. It's okay for board members to sneak in undercover of goodwill to reap financial benefits from an agency that they should have no, nothing to do with. I mean, it's very, very obvious. So, I just hope that bringing this to your attention will make you do the right thing and this would provide transparency to the community that you're not influenced by a colleague on the board to vote money to benefit her nonprofit, which she founded. And if you notice on her website, there is no president, even though she's listed as a past president, emeritus, or emeritus president, there is no president. So, obviously it appears that she's still running the show and it's a conflict of interest. So, I mean, that's, the facts are there. So, please do the right thing. That's all I have to say.
And thank you, Mr. Navarro. Our next public comment is Mr. Tim Prince. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Members of the Board, Staff, Members of the Public. My name is Tim Prince. I was born and raised in this great city and am a product of your schools, our schools. I'm also an attorney for the last 30 years in San Bernardino and my kid, my youngest child, is still at Cajon. And this weekend's going to be a little sad for me because I have to say goodbye to my daughter who's starting her second year at Cal Berkeley. So, that'll be a bittersweet occasion.
She graduated from Cajon, also?
She graduated from middle, college, high school.
Oh, wow. Nice.
Congratulations.
And thank you. And, Dr. Flores, I commend you on your comments about gratitude. There's, there's been times in my life where without gratitude, I don't know where I would have been. When you lose somebody, it's easy to fall into sorrow unless you are thankful for having that person as long as you did. I, I was just so terribly disappointed to see your name on a fundraiser invitation for a figure that has caused such divisiveness and failure for the city of San Bernardino. Jim Pennman is a candidate in the runoff for mayor and, Dr. Flores, your name was at the top of that invitation. And a person that stands for sending a Mexican back to Mexico without the council's approval when he was city attorney, a person that stands for serving 26 years and ending in bankruptcy and getting recalled because of a pattern of wasting money on the public fire unions and other supporters of his, bankrolls of his campaign. Those days of our city have caused such pain and such shame. It's just, I know that they're probably friends of yours and I have nothing against the Pennmans personally, but what message does that send about the future of our city? That a school board member would lend her prominent support to somebody that's been part and parcel of the failures of San Bernardino. Dr. Roberts, I have to take issue as well, echoing the comments of Mr. Navarro. The appearance of a conflict is almost as bad as the actual conflict. And I'm just, I'm disappointed that you have decided to end your commitment to the city schools or try to end your commitment to the city schools. You know, public service is supposed to be about the results for the public. It's not supposed to be a career. And why this may or may not make sense for your political career, it makes no sense at all as a parent in this school district to leave the board in, in a low point of its, of its modern tenure. We have no superintendent. We have division on this board and you have not achieved what the public knows you can achieve, what we expect you to achieve. I've been a supporter of yours. The Democratic Luncheon Club has been a supporter of yours and many other members on this board. But this is just not the right move for the children of this school district because if you accomplish things and you leave things in good shape, we commend you for a higher or different office. This is not even a higher office. This is just bailing out. And I'm very disappointed to see that because I think you have the potential to solve the problems on this board and to work cooperatively with this board and you all need to work cooperatively and always put those children first. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr., oops, sorry. They just, Mr. Prince, I think there was a question for you. I apologize.
I duly respect you as well and you know that. I've always supported you. And the question I have is you need to ask me why. And probably this is not appropriate as to why I would support Mr. Pennman and it's based on, you know, what criteria? And, you know, we live in a democracy and you can't do it right now, but later we can have a discussion and I would appreciate it. So, thank you.
I'll look forward to that.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and thank you again, Mr. Prince, Esquire. All right, our next public speaker is Lynn Hildebrand. Come on up.
Thank you. I appreciate and I am grateful for your belief in children and in teachers and in the value of education. My name is Lynn Hildebrand and I am a Certified Humane Education Specialist for the Humane Society of San Bernardino Valley. The Humane Society is not an animal shelter, but we are a general wellness clinic that focuses on spay neuter. This evening, I am here to request your approval to allow the Humane Society to invite teachers to participate in our humane education program. Invitations to participate would be delivered to the school secretary, who would then put the invitations in the teachers' mailboxes. There is no charge for our humane education program and the teachers sign up on a voluntary basis. We began offering our humane education programs in January of 1991 and we offered them to kindergarten and first grade and they were so successful that in 1992, we offered them to kindergarten and third grade teachers and that was so successful that next year we opened it to the whole school district. And it is much pleasure that I remember meeting with Mrs. Coleing as a teacher who is now a principal at Hunt, tells you how long we've been around, and meeting with Mrs. Martinez as a teacher who is now a principal at Marshall and who also volunteered during our critter camp. Before COVID, we met with about 10,000 students a year. Throughout the pandemic, we met virtually with teachers and students for career days as well as presentations. And during a virtual presentation, students were given a tour of the Humane Society. They were introduced to our staff of veterinarians, technicians, customer service representatives, humane officers, and administrative personnel. We discussed the proper care of animals, careers in animal welfare, safety around animals, and empathy. We asked students to predict the consequences of their words and actions, what, what consequences it would have for them, for others, for animals, and on our environment. We identify problems animals face and then we identify solutions to those problems. We also collaborate with other organizations to offer students the opportunity to engage in activities that will help them realize that they have the power, they have the ability to change our world and make it a more peaceful place in which to live. One of the organizations with whom we collaborate is Stars of Hope. New York says, "Thank you." Stars of Hope is inspired by five-year-old Evan Parnas after the 9/11 terrorist attack on the World Trade Center. Working cooperatively and using and blending all colors of paint, students design their 12-inch wooden stars and then write encouraging words on the back. And this is like a star of hope. This one says, "Don't worry, be happy." This one says, "You are not alone." It was by a Girl Scout and she says, "I hope you are okay. You are not alone." And I'm going to tell a story and I'm probably going to go over here, but when we were, excuse me, when we were at Arrowhead Caps and the counselor was Erica Williams and the students were making Stars of Hope for the 9/11 glade. And a young girl, I knelt down beside her and I said, "Oh, your star is all blue and I see it has some white buildings on it." I said, "Tell me about those white buildings." And she said, "Well, those are the Twin Towers." And she said, "The Twin Towers," I didn't know my aunt, but my mom and dad told me that the Twin Towers came down on her truck and crushed her and killed her. And on the, and she wrote her star and it said, "God bless you from Arrowhead Elementary School in San Bernardino, California." She sold, and she says, "I'll hold your hand." That's the kind of program that we create with Stars of Hope. And Carolyn has come all this way from San Diego, so I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to say that students from Mrs. Geske's second grade class at Lidle Creek, Mrs. Waitman's class at Cypress, Mrs. Antillan's class at Thompson, SOAR Charter Academy, Bing Wong Multicultural Festival, North Park Elementary, they have all participated with us. And just a word about North Park Elementary, the stars on their fence became very warm and I asked someone, "Shouldn't I take them down? Could we put up new ones?" And the teacher asked me not to remove or replace them because they were bringing hope, encouragement, comfort, and strength. And those stars were made by fellow, fellow students here at San Bernardino Unified School District. Just to leave you with a quote, "Nakosi Johnson was a South American child with HIV and AIDS who greatly influenced public perception of his illness and his, its effect. He passed away on June 1st, 2001 at the age of 12 years old and he leaves us with these words. I'm so sorry. Do all you can with what you have and the time you have and the place you are. I thank you very much for your time. I am so sorry that I talk too much." And Carolyn is just going to give you, if, if it's okay. No, okay.
No, Ms. Hildebrand, I do apologize you have gone over, but we do have some questions for you.
Okay.
Can't you give five minutes?
You fill out your own form.
Did you have to fill out a form, though? Did you fill out a form?
You still have time. Fill out a form.
Yeah, you fill out a form. But we do have a question from Dr. Flores and then also Ms. Anna Applegate. So, Dr. Flores?
Yes, thank you so much for sharing the just really heartfelt experiences that our students are having and your guidance and direction. So, just to clarify, could you repeat exactly what you would like us to do?
We, I didn't know exactly how we should do it, so this is how I was, I was told what we should do. We have a flyer and I was told to bring it to the Board of Education to have you approve the flyer for distribution to schools.
So, that you can be invited to the schools?
So, that teachers would know that they could invite us to come into their classroom.
Into their classrooms, okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Applegate?
I just want to express gratitude. I was one of those teachers that you came to my classroom back in 1995 and as a principal, we also had your program. So, my question is, are you still involved with our district or how is it that you are seeking to come into our district? I don't know if Dr. Rodriguez could answer that or, but thank you. I wanted to express gratitude.
And, and I saw your name and I thought, "Oh, how nice to see you." Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you again. And so, our next public comment is Caroline. And Caroline, I'm going to have you pronounce that last name because it looks like such a pretty last name. I want you to teach me it.
Thank you, Board Members. It is so great to be standing in front of you. It is such an honor. I am Caroline Yenidunyan. I have been a teacher in this district for eight years now. I absolutely love my job. I just want to just give you guys the opportunity to hear how this program has worked in my classroom. I remember the first year I had a Mastiff and a miniature horse and a rottweiler in my room all at the same time. And in that experience, though, my students learned kindness, empathy, communication, and just bonding over these animals along with the education program that Lynn provided. Last year, while being virtual, I had an S-Bac lesson where the students had to learn about service animals. And the prompt was, "What qualities do service animals need in order to be one?" And so, they had to read three sources and Lynn and her team came in and they showed a service dog in training and, and answered a lot of questions, but really brought the lessons to life. So, I just hope that you do consider bringing this program onto our school or into our schools and I'm really grateful to be here today. So, thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Caroline. Let me take a look.
We do have a flyer. If I can just pass them around?
You could give it to Ms. Cunningham, please. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service.
All right, our next public comment and speaker is Marissa Hernandez. Come on up, please.
Hi.
Devene?
My name is, okay. I have a son. He's 14 years old and he got bullied at King's Junior High School. And I took him out and I'm having a problem getting him in school. And I lost a son to bullying, okay? They bullied my son and they shot him in the head and, no, he was not a gang member, just for the record. He was a good kid. And this is a gunshot that went through his headrest in his car. 22 years old. Now, I have a 14-year-old and I will be damned if I go through this again. This is hard and I'm having problems with my kid, putting him in school. I don't know why. It's because there's no room. I mean, I, I was raised in this city. My dad worked for the city, San Bernardino for 40 years, the street division. I don't know why there's a problem to get my kid in school. You know, I'm just getting the runaround, oh, because he got bullied, he has to go. No, I'm, I'm expert at bullying. I am the expert right here, right here. I know, I know, I'm going through it every day, but my son, he doesn't feel safe at King and he, I mean, what's the big deal to get him out of there? I'll drive him to school. It doesn't matter. But I just need him to get to school. I mean, he deserves to be in school. You know, there was a problem with the bullying and they're telling me this and that and I, I don't, I'm, I'm just not gonna, he's not gonna go to King. He doesn't feel safe. And this is the outcome of bullying right here.
Okay, Ms. Hernandez, thank, thank you so much and one, so our condolences for your son.
And you guys need to say something about, do something about bullying in the area, in our school district because kids are hanging themselves. It's not, it's not cool. Like, you guys need to do something and I swear, it's hitting home a lot and sad.
I did have a question for clarification for you, please. So, are you trying to re-enroll your student into one of our other middle schools? Is that?
No, just in San Bernardino area, just either Golden Valley, Serrano, you know, just get him in school. I just need, and I'm, he's not going to go to that school because he feel, I mean, he got bullied. I mean, he got bullied.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm not gonna go.
We'll get some follow-up for you and then Ms. Tobias, our other board member, has a question for you, please.
It was kind of along the same lines. I was just going to ask if this was something that had been.
No, just in some, you know, area, just either Golden Valley, Serrano, you know, just get him in school. I just need, and I'm, he's not going to go to that school because he feel, I mean, he got bullied. I mean, he got bullied.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm not gonna go.
We'll get some follow-up for you and then Ms. Tobias, our other board member, has a question for you, please.
It was kind of along the same lines. I was just going to ask if this was something that had been brought up already to the administration? Okay. So did they refer you?
And this was last year when he got bullied, so he was in virtual learning. Now he, he wants to be in regular school like everybody else. And you know, I want him, I want a normal kid. You know, he's, he's kind of scared though because when he went to King, he got bullied. Like, I cannot believe that. It's crazy to me because I already have one now. I'm not gonna, I can't, I just can't. There's no way in hell.
So can we just make sure that we follow up and we get an update? Thank you.
All righty, Ms. Hernandez, we have Vice President Tillman and then Dr. Flores.
Yeah, can we, you didn't leave your phone number on here. Can you make sure you give us your phone number? And we'll make sure that someone follows up.
Marissa Hernandez, Michael Morales is my son.
No, 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 sure, we'll get it, but just, I'm gonna give it to Karen after the question from Dr. Flores. I'm gonna take it over there.
And my son was well-known, Richard Leva, he played for Pacific. You know, he played, he was involved, he played for Golden Valley. You know, my son was a good kid too. I need work for Baca.
All right, Ms. Hernandez, we do, I apologize, we do have Dr. Flores.
I just wanted to say, as a mother, I express my condolences to you. And I know nothing, no words can replace the love and your son. Very tragic. And we are here to serve and I'm glad that you came. And I don't know where you are in the process, but wherever...
Give me a call tomorrow, I'll see where they can...
Okay, whatever you desire. I know that Dr. Rodriguez will, will follow up and help and Mrs. Applegate will make sure as well, so thank you for coming.
Do me a favor, can you walk over to Ms. Cunningham? She'll take your information. Thank you so much.
Ms. Hernandez, the gentleman to your right in the purple shirt, he's actually our Director of Enrollment, Mr. Buckner, and he can assist you right now as we speak.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Ms. Cunningham, I believe we have two virtual or online comments, please.
Yes, we do. Our first caller is Marilyn in Tyrion. If you're available, please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, welcome.
Thank you for having me and thank you for the board. Thank you to all the staff for having me and taking my comment. I just wanted to bring up the trouble I've been having getting the mileage reimbursement for my daughter who has an IP. As of right now, like we started the new school year, but I have not, I haven't received May and June's mileage reimbursement from the last school year. And I did send an email to the Special Ed Department who handles that. I think, then the contact I have is, her name is Virginia Dean. And I have not received an answer, so I don't know if there's been staff changes or things like that, but I just want to bring this issue to the board and to you guys' attention that at least in my daughter's case, the mileage reimbursement is not being processed in a timely manner and, and her NPS is reporting attendance as they should monthly so that they can get paid, right? So I don't know what the procedure is or I've signed all the invoices and everything, but as far as getting the mileage reimbursement on time, it's not happening. And I just wanted to bring that to the board to see maybe if you guys can work it out, if it's a clerical thing, if it's a staff thing, so that at least this matter can be resolved. I don't know if other families are having this problem, but I know for me, it's been an ongoing. And just to give you an idea, in May, I just barely got a mileage reimbursement from my daughter for January and February of 2022. So it's like that behind. So I just wanted to let you guys know and hopefully this can be resolved so that, you know, the mileage can be processed on time and then the payment can be mailed and received in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. We definitely will follow through. We will discuss that with our Special Ed Department. Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham, we have our contact information, correct?
Yes.
All righty, our next comment, please.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Negretti. If you're available, please unmute.
Good evening, welcome, Ms. Negretti.
Good evening, Board members. I'm calling regarding the $19,133,442,000 that I see for, that are designated from the SIR III funds for the interactive TVs. I'm just wondering, what is the agreement or what are the strings attached to have the interactive TVs? There's always some sort of contingency that follows with anything regarding SIR III funds. And could there have been something better to provide services for the students directly? I saw that for the SIR III funding, it provides anywhere from support for student mental health, addressing behavioral issues and preventing violence, accelerated learning recovery. And so could those funds be better used into something other than smart TVs? Because interactive TVs, the bottom line are smart TVs. And because SIR funding did ask for input from the public, from the administrators, what is there to support that this is something that administrators, teachers, or the parents ask for, to have smart TVs placed into? And this was for pretty much elementary and secondary schools. And that's just regarding the SIR III funding. So if I could find out, if somebody can get back to me regarding what is the agreement? What are the strings attached? Secondly, I would like to know if the public is receiving clarification to understand that the assistant superintendents are not the superintendents, that they're the rotating interim superintendents because I see them being called in different messages. For example, when I saw the concerns that parents from Belvedure had, they were saying, "Well, go ahead and get ahold of Superintendent Applegate." And since this is something that's changing every month, I believe that the district parents should be aware that they are not the superintendent, they are in a rotating interim superintendent position. And lastly, I would like to ask that San Bernardino City Unified District revise and implement decisions that are not discriminatory towards students, parents, and staff for upholding their rights and beliefs. And I ask for this because I saw that for, one of the terms that has been deleted and that is no longer being used, has a regulations, is the following. It stays fully vaccinated, was deleted, has this term is no longer used in the regulations, all protections now apply regardless of vaccination status and requirements do not vary based on an employee's vaccination status. So I ask that you please revise and make sure that decisions from the, from now on are non-discriminatory towards students and staff for upholding their rights and beliefs. Lastly, just on a side note, please do consider bringing back Lynn Hildbrand, the Stars of Hope. Her education for, towards animals and the importance of Spain and neutering has always been helpful for many and it, when it starts at the elementary level, it just brings awareness that continues to uplift and hold towards middle schools and high schools as they become adults and themselves become parent owners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. Ms. Applegate did have a comment for you.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti, for your comments. And one that I wanted to address was the use of SIR funds for technology. And we do have it written into the plan that not only are we spending money for kids directly for their devices, but also to modernize our classrooms. Just as we modernize facilities, our classrooms also need to have the latest technology. We will follow up and bring you more information on how that is affecting instruction and how we are looking at recovering learning through the use of technology, high impactful technology.
Thank you, Ms. Applegate. And Ms. Negretti, Dr. Flores has a question for you, please.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Negretti. I actually was going to pull that item because I needed clarification as well. And in terms of all the aspects of it and et cetera, you, you hit the nail on the head. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and thank you again, Ms. Negretti.
Thank you.
I believe that's it for public comments, is that correct, Ms. Cunningham? All righty, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to 4.0, closed session. 4.1, closed session, public comments. Any public comments?
There are none.
All righty, then we will go into closed session, come back out. All righty, folks, thank you for being patient for us. That was actually one of our shorter closed sessions, so I think we did all right on that. It was only maybe an hour and a half instead of five. Just kidding. We don't, all right, good job, board and executive cabinet. Thank you for staying on point. All right, we got some great news to report out. We're going to come to 5.0, action report from closed session. 5.1, approval of elementary principal and, I'm trying to find the readout, there we go. All right. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Gregory Alexander, elementary school principal, effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined. Funding source 035, site to be determined.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion?
Congratulations.
All right, let's vote. Not yet, let's vote. Nope, we got a vote still.
Sorry.
Congratulations, Mr. Alexander. Are you here this evening? Please stand so we can acknowledge you. Congratulations. All right, on to 5.2. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Courtney Weber, elementary school principal, effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined. Funding source 035, site to be determined.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? It'd been me that missed it. All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Weber. And are you here this evening? We're gonna make you stand up. Okay, if you're here, you get to stand and we get to say, "All right." Congratulations, well done. I'm gonna say quite a journey as well. Great story. All right.
Congratulations.
5.3. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Adrian Ortega, elementary school principal, effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined. Funding source 035, site to be determined.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, motion carries. Congratulations to, is it Mr. or Mrs. Ortega? I think it's Mr. Or, Mrs. Ortega, I'm sorry, that's what I thought. Mrs. Ortega, is she here this evening? All right, well, if you're out there in cyber world space, virtual world, congratulations to you two. Welcome aboard. All right, 5.4, approval of middle school, all right, principal. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Guedemo, Guerrero, that's a tongue twister, Guedemo Guerrero, middle school principal, Curtis Middle School, effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined. Funding source 035.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, motion carries. Congratulations to Mr. Guerrero, is he in the house?
Congratulations.
Which I believe he is. All right, let's go ahead and stand with us. Well done, congratulations, sir. 5.5, approval of elementary school vice principal. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Amy Copeland, elementary school vice principal, Lincoln Elementary School, effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined. Funding source 035.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Copeland, if you are here this evening, let's go ahead and stand up and recognize here. Congratulations. All right.
Congratulations.
5.6, approval of adult school vice principal. All right, I'm just trying to get the name right, so I'm ready. All right, be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Elena Zarate, and is it Similin? Similin? Similin, adult school vice principal, Inland Career Education Center, effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined. Funding source 130.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Zarate Similin, is she here this evening? Okay, well, if you're watching, congratulations and welcome. I, oh, I think I have one more. Yep, we do. 5.7, approval of coordinator accountability and educational technology. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Cesar Lopez, coordinator accountability and educational technology, effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined. Funding source 322.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Lopez. Is Mr. Lopez in the house this evening? All right, he is not. And if you're watching out there, congratulations, welcome. We will move on to 5.8, expulsion of students. All right, oops, sorry. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's finding, facts, and recommendations in order to expulsion of the following student with identification number as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
So moved.
Second.
It's been, it's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.9. Oops, sorry. Students recommended for suspension or expulsion excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of corrections.
I'll move.
Oops, oh, sorry. All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, can I just make a comment? You know, when we get to these, I think it's just within us, we pause because it saddens us. It really does. But you know, as you look at this particular one, because I should have made a comment on the other one too, you know, there's other means of correction that we always are looking for. We take no delight in expulsions, but there are ed codes that govern us to, to have to do certain things. But, but it is, this is the moment when we get to these items that we, it really does hurt our hearts that we have to get to that point. But we do have, you know, partners and other supports that we're not just throwing our kids away. We still want to do what we can to restore them, so just wanted to make that comment.
Absolutely, Dr. Daddy Rogers, and you're right, other means of corrections is a very powerful tool that was passed a number of years ago as well as our youth court and restorative justice programs. I think we, as a district, do an amazing job actually trying every level of support and intervention to keep us from getting to this point. I just know it from what I do in education. This district's outstanding at doing... This district's outstanding at doing it. Dr. Flores?
Yes, I wanted to piggyback on what you said, Dr. Rogers, and what you said, Dr. Wyatt. Our staff, thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. Your departments really work hard. And I think Miki Chaskowski also did a great job in, you know, founding the youth court and developing it and so forth. And just, you know, again, from the inspiration, thank you. We appreciate you. And our kids, you know, certainly deserve second and third chances. And so, I think we do, I mean, we're a model to other school districts in the state. When I go to conferences, I always, they ask me about it. And so, I always refer them to you, Dr. Rodriguez, or to Miki. And so, they, you know, they're, we're a model. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and to build a wrong, your theme of gratitude. I know this board is extremely appreciative of the efforts of our staff, and not just our staff, as we heard earlier, our community providers as well, because it's a team effort to definitely keep our kids in school. Alrighty, I've kind of moved around here. Let me get back to 5.10. Oh, I am, oh, you guys got me off there a little bit. Alright, let's vote. Good discussion. Alright, motion carries. 5.10, lift of expulsion of students. Let me make sure we, be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Diego City Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
So, second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Dr. Flores and then Dr. Daddy Rogers. Good. Alright, discussion?
This is where the rest of, the rest of this is good.
I will say, that's a good number right there, Dr. Daddy Rogers. That's the number we want to see.
Yep.
Coming back. Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.11, 5.11. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Diego City Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. Moving on to 5.12, other closed session action. There is no other action from closed session. We'll move on to 6.0 Reports by Union Organizations. 6.1 San Diego Teachers Association.
No report.
No report. 6.2 California School Employees Association.
Hello, my name is Kim Brown. I'm the site rep coordinator for CSEA Chapter 183. CSEA has been continuously negotiating with the district on a weekly basis. We have been working through some tough sections. We continue to stay open and create a solution and work with integrity and transparency with the district. A big shout out to all of the classified staff, continue to work hard as we roll out the first month of our school. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, and definitely thank you to all of our staff out there for making our schools pretty and running well. Alright, 6.3 Communication Workers of America.
No report.
There's no report. 6.4 San Diego School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Thank you very much. No report. 7.0 Reports and Presentations. 7.1 San Diego City Unified School District New Website Preview. We'll be turning that over, looks like, to Ms. Antevaros.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, President Wyatt, members of the board. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here to share some really great work that our team is doing to improve our website presence. And in keeping with the inspiration of the evening, I want to also appreciate Ms. Anna Applegate for suggesting that we come here to share this information and give you an update on the status of our website tonight. Because you, Board, you have urged us to improve our website. You've told us that you want to make sure that information is easier to access for our families. And I'm really excited to share with you what I think is going to be a truly exceptional visitor experience on our website when we're able to launch the new website soon. So, next slide, David. Tonight, we'd like to give you a brief presentation that does three things. First, we want to make sure that you get a preview of what's coming. So you're actually going to see the, see it for the first time, the latest version of it. And then we want to share with you the process we've gone through to make sure that we heard all voices in the district as part of this process of developing a new website. And then we want to make sure we give you the opportunity to provide us with any additional feedback that could help strengthen the final product for our families and community. And perhaps you'll just be wowed and you'll think that we'd hit all of the marks that we needed to hit with this. But we know that you often see things that we don't, and we really appreciate it when you share them. And we're very eager to hear your words tonight. So, David, next slide. Great. So, our SBCUSD website is a primary source of information in our district for our families and our community. We literally have thousands of people every day who visit our website and tens of thousands every week. So, it's a very popular place for people to get information. We know that our families want answers, and that's why they go there, but they also need them to be easy to find and intuitive to get to. We launched our current platform seven years ago. And unfortunately, in the digital world, websites need to be redesigned every three years. And so, we've really gotten a lot of use out of the web platform that we're using. We have realized in recent years, though, that our website solution is really not keeping pace with our needs in order to provide information. And so, we last fall launched a very intentional process to identify a content management system that would meet our needs and also to redesign our entire district web presence. And so, tonight, that's what we're going to be sharing with you. Next slide, great. So, because we wanted to be sure that our website met the information and access needs of our entire community, we first launched a task force and reached out to hear the voices of people throughout our community. We involved employees from the district office and from several school sites, both classified and certificated managers and staff. We also got feedback from parents, students, and partners in the community. We included input from website users when we designed the RFP that we used to identify our new vendor that we're going to be working with. And we also had them involved in evaluating the proposals from those contractors or those providers that we, we heard from, or the finalists. One of the features that we really evaluated very carefully when we looked at this website was the translation feature. A lot of websites rely on Google's Translate to provide that sort of automatic change. You can go to the top and you choose the language and it will put it into a different language for you. And the, the final provider that we chose, Final Site, actually has a very robust translation feature. It doesn't rely on Google Translate alone. But one of the things that we really liked about their translation feature is that it allows us to override the automatic translation and input our own language. So that as families go to automatically translate our website, they will get the, what we want them to see in terms of how we present that, each of the pages that we put out there. After you approved the contract last spring, we set about the process of creating a template and designing a new web presence. And we brought that template, we made time in the process to bring that template back to all of our stakeholders as well, so that we could get additional feedback in the design. And here's where I need to give a huge shout out to David Chavez. You know, his leadership on this project has been absolutely stellar. He's taken every piece of feedback that we've gotten and he's incorporated it into the new design that you're about to see. And that's no, it's no small undertaking to redesign our entire website from the ground up. We have over 4,000 individual pages on our website. And he's going through systematically and reviewing every single one of those pages and identifying which ones have relevant content that need to be brought forward. Not just rolling everything over automatically and carrying forward all the problems that we've built into the, that we bolted on over the years, but really starting from scratch. And when we create or launch our new webpage, we're going to be starting with at least 20% of the current pages. So for those of you who are doing the math in your head pretty quickly, that means that David and his team will have updated 800 individual pages on our webpage before we launch it, which I think is pretty spectacular. And so, with that, I'm going to turn the spotlight over to David because he deserves the honor to actually give you the tour of the site that he's building. He's going to show you the new homepage. He's going to take you in to see one of our department pages and also to take a look at one of our school sites as well.
Actually, I wanted to tell, I want to give a big shout out to Ginger Antevaros for this, this moment to present to you, Board, the new website. And with her leadership and guidance, it really helped me bring in systems to really bring a robust feedback system. So this way, we can incorporate everybody's feedback and really provide the best service for our community and our parents and our students. So, with that, I am proud to present our homepage. One second, please. So if you see right here, here's our new homepage. We really want to focus on the presence of our students on the forefront. So we want to incorporate more pictures, more, more of those special moments so that the first moment that our audience, our community, our stakeholders visit our website, they are seeing the culture right away up on the upfront. So, as we've moved down, I want to point out that we also brought in new icons, much more, much more, I want to say, in-your-face kind of content. So this way, you can, it jumps out at you. So this way, you can go to-
Can you read them, David? Because we can't see it.
Oh, I apologize. So right now, the icons we show right now as an example are back-to-school information, enroll your child, the LCAB, Look and Control Accountability Plan, meals, transportation, calendar. You know, some of those most common subjects that our parents are looking for when they visit our website. And these are completely interchangeable, so we can constantly update these on a regular basis. So this way, the content's not stagnant. It's always fresh. And as we move down to, I also want to highlight this special new feature I want to bring in that on the, when we have currently a big topic that we're trying to talk about, for instance, link learning, we can put these on the forefront that they, we show a, we got a link learning here in the district. You want to learn more, these, our audience is simply just click on it and it goes straight to the college and career rating this page where all the link learning information's housed. Right now, we're doing a lot of work with our before and after-school programs. So that's a big one that we can keep on the forefront as well. So, a lot of interactivity, I can say that. A lot of interactivity. But I want to point out more that the pictures really tell our story. And that's where, that's where our audiences really get captured on our web presence. And then, I also want to bring up that we will have a more robust upcoming event calendar. So it won't just have the regular, just common district events. With the help of our integration with community engagement under direction of Ms. Antevaros, we're bringing in more community events, more city events. We're going to incorporate those into our calendar. So this way, our whole school community is informed of what is going, of what is going on in our different sectors of the city. So this way, they can see an event that might be relevant to them. Here's the information to go to it. So, we have a lot, a lot of, a lot of integration, a lot of good content coming our way when it comes to the new website. And also, quick facts. We get a lot of people asking us the quick facts of how many students are enrolled, graduation rate. Well, we want to show that we have these modules that will have these certain facts. And these are completely interchangeable. They're not locked in any way. So these are completely, we can keep these updated on a regular basis. So, but we're really happy to have these because this has been a big module that people have been asking for, just our quick facts about our district. And having these on the homepage really tells our audiences what is offered and what we accomplish too. And as we move forward, we have connect with us through our social media channels. So, right now, I have the feed with our Twitter feed. And this is just a demo site, so just, I just want to paint a picture that when we actually go live, the, when you hover over the pictures, you actually see the actual context of the post. So you'll see it in English and Spanish as well. And we also have interchangeable buttons here. The buttons are the really big factor that we took, took the, our new vendor because they, they really focus on consolidating the content. So this way, there's more ease of navigation. So this way, our audience doesn't have to click over and over and over again. It's more the contents on the, on one single page than opposed to three other pages. And also, on the footer, we will have our, our most important information that state mandated. So this is, this is still a work in progress that has more content being built. But I'm very pleased that on the progress we've made in the past, in the past months. And also, I'm also really pleased to show that right here on the, on the news and social page, we have the capability of telling our stories in imagery and also content as well. So, we have the back-to-school extravaganza. Click on it. It tells the full story there of what happened in a press release form. So it's beautifully, beautifully structured that way. And also, I also want to point out too, Final Site also has a partnership with Parents Square, so they can fully integrate with our Parents Square feeds. So, our Parents Square feeds are actually featured in the news, the news section. And also want to point out too, that once you click on them, you do not need to have a login for it. It's right there. So anybody in our community can see these, these newsletters we put out on a weekly basis. And that right there, and as I point out more, I want to show the navigation that we have consolidated a lot of the navigation, so it's not so jumbled. Very, very journalized topics, but very easy to view. And then, I also want to point out, we did add a sub-navigation. So this way, we can show students, these are their most common, their most common go-to links. Also our families too. And then we're incorporating our community as well because there's, there's a lot of resources that our community will, will need to benefit from. And then, yes, I, I, I feel that we've come a long way, but I think we're in a really good, in a positive direction right now. Oh, yes, yes. Thank you, Ginger. Thank you, Ginger. One thing that we're really proud of too, we're in a world that everybody wants to find things quicker and faster. So we've worked with our vendor to work with this new feature called Find It Fast. So we click here, and now these are really more subtopics that, that we know that our audiences are asking for just to get there quick and, and get the information quicker. So if you see right here that we've actually added the Board Agenda because I know it's a big thing that we always want to incorporate for you, Board. And also, how to register for public comment and the Board meeting calendar. There's always, there are always big needs for those. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of good features that came with our new vendor. And also, they have a more robust search feature. So we'll be able to tag our, our pages with common, common words. But also, it also looks for the specific items that our parents and community are looking for. So, the robust search feature is going to be really nice. Unfortunately, I can't show it to you because it's still being built, but I seen it in demo mode. I'm pleased to announce it's going to be really nice for our community. And then also, our search staff, which in collaboration with our IT department, they're going to integrate our internal directory. So, so our parents and students can find their teacher, find their, find that specific staff member that, you know, that's been helping them, or, or, or just email them, call them. So this way, they can find the, the specific staff member in a, in a, in an easy click, click environment. And then, yes, and then from- And then, yes, and then from here, I'm going to show one of our departments, which actually I'm going to show you enrollment. So looking right here in enrollment, I've actually consolidated a lot of their pages, because at first their, their navigation was up to probably about 10 pages, but I consolidated-
Mr. Chavez, can we take a quick pause? Mr. Tillman does have a question for you.
Yes.
Sorry.
You know, just so you know, my background is IT, and so I have an area where we do websites. The biggest thing is change, right? So if you got change, people go to the site and look. But why is it that you guys got rid of the, go to the main page? So I, I don't see the tab for, I know you said you clicked somewhere, you can see the, the current Board Agenda? But I think that should be a main tab. You guys got rid of the tab for School Board?
No, no, actually, sir, we actually put it under About Us, which your, your, you Board are actually housed right here.
Let me, let me explain this to you.
Sure.
I do this for a living. I don't want to have to dig. There's certain items to be your priority. Now, maybe somebody said, hey, get rid of the Board, get rid of the Board Agenda, and put this other stuff. But a lot of people from the public, when they go to the site, those are the things they're looking for. So in your mind, because you're close to it, you know where to click to find it. The average person doesn't. I don't, I don't know where to click. I'm looking at it right now, I'm saying, whereas I go to this site all the time for the agenda. I tell parents, you can go to the website and find the agenda, find the meetings. So I just think it'd be better to have it where it is. And, and, and your challenge is going to be, the site you have right now, the existing site, is a good site, it's a clean site. It looks cleaner than the site that you have, you're proposing. But I don't think we should lose functionality. You have room to put other tabs there, but I wouldn't take off the School Board and the Board Agenda off of that main. It should have a spot where it's easy to get to.
Right, yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Tillman, yeah, we'll take your feedback, definitely. Thank you so much.
It would be nice to incorporate those icons that are there, because they're, they pop, they pop and people can. And so my two questions are, what would the different languages, I mean, are you incorporating the different languages? Spanish, Vietnamese, and I don't know what the other, other ones are, but do the parents, is it easily, is it an icon where they click? Or how do they do it?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm actually glad you brought that up.
You don't have to show me right now, but, so okay, you can show me in a little bit. That's one question I have. And then the second question is, you know, parents call us, and they can't find who or where they're supposed to go. So it would be really important to have an interactive feature where parents can send messages to people in certain departments. I know you're going to cringe, you guys, but, 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 you know, people are busy walking around, doing their work, but at least they can have a space to, you know, pose their question. And maybe somebody can go in periodically to then, you know, interact with them, or call them, or whatever, and, and get more, instead of them waiting and waiting and having to call us, because nobody has answered them. So I would really encourage you to have more interactive features for even our students as well, you know, our teachers, and for everybody, so, anyway, okay. Thank you.
Mine's off, Mr. Abios.
First of all, I want to say thank you for the presentation. I, I really like, you know, the, just the visual that it has, I enjoy it. When I look at the old website, you know, the, the red on the top, and then it kind of looks a little outdated, quite frankly, just my taste. But I, I, I do see Mr. Tillman's point in terms of like the little tabs there on the old one. You have a section that says School Board. Not that that really matters to, to me, frankly, because when I was a parent, I still couldn't find the agenda. You know, it would still take me a long time to navigate. Can you point me back to the direction where you said something about it was quick to access? I did like that, where was that?
It's right here, Mr. Abios, just click right here, it says Find It Fast, and they're right there.
Yeah, so I like that feature because you have the Board Agenda. If you click that, it's going to take you directly to it, I'm assuming?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so if you want to know more about the Board, you would go to departments, is that where you went?
Actually, under, for the Board of, Board of Education, I put you under About Us.
Oh, okay.
Under the About Us, yes.
Got it, got it, okay. Okay, yeah, and then in terms of like language, you're, where you have your little, next to Find, Find Fast? Okay, that's where you can switch it to Spanish?
Yes, so I can show you real quick how it does in Spanish. I know that old language is not there, but we're, we're almost there on the testing phase. So I just shoot over to Spanish, and right away, it already, already translated everything to Spanish.
Nice, nice, and is Spanish the only language, or are we working on other languages?
We're working on other languages, yes. Yeah, they span on every single language, actually.
Perfect, perfect. So just, I just wanted to say, you know, good job. I really like your presentation, and, you know, change is always hard, but it doesn't mean that it's not a good thing. I have seen this website that we currently have evolve over the years. And it's, it's evolved in a positive direction, and so I would expect nothing less.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Abios, Mrs. Alzamadina.
I was going to say something similar to, I, I really do appreciate the new design, it's clean. I did like the other one, but I do appreciate the time that you have to try to declutter everything and try to, you know, make it easier, and where it doesn't use so much information. Sometimes you have to click one tab to go another tab, and go another tab, and so I was kind of a little confused. Well, it wasn't confusing, it was just a longer process just to get to the main point. I do agree that we should have like a board one on one of the tabs, but I imagine that's probably the something that you're going to end up doing, and that'll make it easier for that. But no, I do appreciate the time that you've put into it. I know creating a website is not easy, and just cleaning it up and creating more space for it to evolve, as Ms. Abios mentioned, into a better website as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alzamadina, Dr. Daddie Rogers.
Thank you, and I commend you all for what you've done. It looks bright. So a couple of questions on, because the interactive came up, and I noticed, you know, a lot of times we're having this now. First, my question is, do we have a, where's the number? Like if someone is looking, is there a contact us somewhere? Or do we put our district number on there, and does someone really answer that?
Well, I can tell you this, Dr. Rogers, that, yes, there will be a contact page. I have not developed that quite yet. It's in the works, there, there will be an interactive form that, you know, it, people can contact us on the website with much more ease. So yes, it, it will be there.
But the contact us is with a number, though, that, that they could call? And in the second part of that, then if there's a contact us, I don't know how they do this, but you know how sometimes you can chat? You know, and I don't know if it just goes to a particular department or how they do that, but is that something you're looking at along with the contact us? And then if they need to, but obviously, we have to have someone that's, can chat when they're, when they come on. And I don't know how that works, or who that would be assigned to, but.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up, that's actually further in the presentation.
Oh, oh, okay, that's what we get when we start, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Daddie Rogers, Dr. Flores, and I'll go after you.
I was just going to follow up on what Dr. Rogers said. It would be really great, even for our staff, if they have questions to have somebody to chat with live, or through written, you know, to get back to them. So that would be the interactive aspect of it, so, thank you. And thanks, it looks great, it looks beautiful, I love the pictures.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and then just myself, as always, thank you for all the, the hard work put into this. I, I can't imagine the many, many, many hours it takes. I built some simple websites myself, and nothing like this, of course. Maybe just a recommendation, because, you know, we've heard varying opinions of what we see on the old page and the new page. And of course, anytime anything changes, you'll have criticism, whether it's good, negative, or just the same. Possibly, you know, when you're doing this, and you may have already done this, do you have folks kind of go through it and navigate it to kind of give it a test run? And if so, do we have different user groups, right? Like the young and the old, and the super tech savvy, and those that are afraid of a computer or going online? And then, you know, maybe folks from the community, our students, our staff, you know, just, and then our employees, obviously, too, right? All of us kind of just see what they have to say, right? And if we've done that, great, I imagine we have. But just to get that feedback, that real universal feedback, and kind of, I guess, a fair assessment from all different user groups. I like the colors a little bit better, I think it's more aligned with our, our branding, which is nice. There are some things I, I'm looking at the old website right now, while this one's up there. And there's things I like about the old site and the new site, so I know it's trying to get that marriage of the two that is truly the challenge. But I'm glad we are evolving with our website, let me say that, because I know that's an important piece. And the more interactive, the better, and the faster we could find information. I know when I go to it, when I can't, it's just because we have a huge district and a lot of information. I just go to the search engine, and I start there, and I just start typing in whatever it is I'm trying to find, and go from there. So I don't, I'm pretty sure that's Find It Fast, or whatever that says up there, Find Fast. But yeah, that's just my feedback. So if you've done those things, it'd be great to hear, but thank you.
So, Dr. Wyatt, we did actually involve a lot of stakeholders in the, the template design, but they didn't, and in the process of the RFP, they went and saw other sites that were like ours, like the one that we're using that the, the current vendor uses. So they were able to test out some of the navigation features in some live sites for other districts and organizations. We have not had this live yet, so we haven't been able to do a test group on our own navigation, but that's a great idea, so I definitely took that down.
Oh, thank you, and sorry we interrupted. We, we don't have a copy of the presentation, we didn't know how many pages there are to it, because if you're like, like, right at the end, I apologize if you're right at the end.
You are, no worries. I know David's going to jump you into a, a school site, so you can see what one of our school sites will look like, and then I'll close this out, so just, yep.
Oh, right here, we have one of our school sites, Pacific High School right now. So it's still in a little bit of development stage, because they're in the final stages of the school sites. But just like the homepage, we duplicated the homepage, look onto our school sites where they're, they're going to have their own logo, they're also going to have their own colors, everything specialized to their brand. And it's like, just like the homepage, it is structured just, just like the homepage. So this way, the school sites will have not only consistency across the district, but also have their own identity with their school colors and, and also their logos. So we, we are very happy how it's coming along, but again, we appreciate a lot of your feedback. This is great feedback you guys are giving us, and we do appreciate that. Other than that, Ginger, you want to keep going?
So as we work toward the launch of this, which we hope to do on the 20th of September, that is a board meeting night, so we're hoping to come up with a creative way that you all can help us actually flip the switch and turn on the new website, some way to celebrate this new milestone for us. But we will be doing some training of all of the users across the district who will be responsible for maintaining our district webpages as well as our school site webpages. I can tell you that this platform is a lot more user-friendly to manage. That's one of the challenges we have of the existing platform, is that our, our users are finding it difficult to update their webpages. That's not going to be a problem with this new site. It's, it's much more user-friendly and intuitive for our staff across our school sites and departments so that they can keep their information fresh. We'll also be continuing the process of the content development so that we can get more of those important and critical sites up, or pages up before we launch. And then I want to thank Dr. Flores for bringing us a, a solution that we might want to look into. We'd already been exploring the idea of a chatbot, which is kind of what you're talking about with that interactive feature. It's got a little box there where you just type in your question, and the, the chatbot basically goes and searches the entire website through artificial intelligence, finds the answer and sends it back to you as if you're having a conversation. And if you're not able to get, if it can't give you the answer, then it does help make a connection to a live person to help you respond to that. One of the solutions we're looking at also allows that feature to happen in a text messaging process as opposed to from the website, so, and that happens translated as well. So those are, that's definitely something we're looking into, and we're hoping that that feature might be able to come online sometime around the first of the year, but we need to get the original site or the base site launched first. So want to thank you for sharing that idea with us, because it gives us another option to look into. And so those are the next steps preparing us to launch on September 20th. And I definitely want to thank you for your time, and I want to thank Ms. Applegate as well for inviting us to come here to share this work with you. So looking forward to launching the new site and hearing some additional ideas, so, thanks.
All right, well, again, thank you for the presentation, looks like we have three more lights on, so more comments and questions. Mr. Tillman.
Well, I would caution you, you said September 20th, but the system's not done yet. I'm just, because I do IT for a living, I wouldn't want to put somebody in that box. September 20th comes real quick, so I wouldn't pick a date that you're going to launch. I'd have the system completed, tested, quality assurance, people trained, and then pick a launch date. Only because I do this for a living, I know September 20th date is way too soon, just from what you guys have shown me tonight. So I wouldn't say September 20th is the launch date, because you set yourself up for a failure. You're picking your own date, you don't have to pick September 20th. Wait till the system's done, it's tested, it looks good, then you come back and tell us what the date's going to be, because you know your system is completed and you're ready to have the launch. But I wouldn't back myself in a corner, I'm just telling you, just, I know I'm digging into the weeds right now, but I'm just telling you, from my perspective, I wouldn't do that. I do want to make sure that on the tabs that exist right now, that those tabs are easily accessible in the new site. I'll give you a prime example, when I click on parent tabs, you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. You've got 24 links underneath there. There are people who have been using this site for a long time. They're accustomed to going to that one link and clicking. You told me yourself you had thousands of pages, so there's no way you're going to make it so that Dr. Flores only has to click on one link. They're still going to be digging. But, but the worst thing to do is to change everything and not have links on there that correspond with the links that we have right now. No matter what you do in terms of talking about it and explaining it, that person who's used to coming to our site, clicking and going to where they want, is going to be very, very frustrated. I think you should have, and I think you're saying that, the new system is going to allow the people who own the content to maintain their own content, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct.
And I agree, that's a big deal. So if the existing system doesn't do that, then I think it's a huge deal to make sure that the new system does do that. I think that's, that's critical. But I, with those, with those changes, I, I think the, the challenge you have is, you guys have a good site already, and you have a lot of functionality, functionality built into it. And I'm not, and I'm not just saying off the cuff that the School Board link should be back on there, because it should be. The average person that comes to the site and has a concern, a lot of people want to be able to contact the School Board, they want to know what the agenda is, that should not be something that they should have to hunt and peck for. This is the Board of Education's website. You guys said the schools have their sites, right? So this, this, when it lands, people should be able to find out who the Board is and what the agenda is for that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman, Dr. Flores.
Thank you for all the hard work, it's, and the design, I know it's a lot, it's intense, right? So I just want clarification, so are we going to have a list of all the schools, and then we can, they can click on it and then go to their website?
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent, okay, instead of hunting for it, okay, great, okay. And then they'll be able to, if I understand, they have access to upgrade and update their, their website and all of that?
Yes, that's correct.
That's fabulous, okay, people are going to love that. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and that was a quick one. Dr. Daddie Rogers?
I won't even add to it again, because that was my concern about all the, I saw that one, nice one, but then sometimes when we go to the sites, I don't know if they have people manning them and, and able to. So hopefully, it all works together, because that's been an ongoing problem. Sometimes you go there, and there's like error message, and it's not even working. So I hope this is, you know, all together in an effort. And then, was one other thing, maybe it wasn't important. Oh, no, it is very important. We did say, you know, input, 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 but it's very important, you know, and I just even got a recent reminder from parents that, you know, somewhere in this involvement, you know, maybe the meeting before, whatever that launch date is, somehow we probably need to introduce it, whether we do it per campus and have the sampling of individuals come in- and have the sampling of individuals come in of our parents. But to just get those perspective, I think Dr. Wyatt was mentioning that earlier. But if they're already kind of asking, it gives us a kind of telltale sign that they just want to know and be able to come in. And maybe something's there that we don't see. You know, maybe something there that we forgot. But to get their voice in and then that way it's a continuation of sharing out where they can help one another as well and be great, some of our parent groups to be able to weigh in. So thank you.
Thank you.
No, we appreciate that very much. So I know that one of the things parents told us a lot was that navigation on our current site was a challenge. The navigation, the search functions and outdated content. Those were the most common feedback points that we got and things that needed to be improved. So I love the idea of get that site into a live space, even if it's in a demo, and allow them the opportunity to come in and navigate it and see how intuitive it is for them. So.
Even add for convenience, I just thought that you might be able to send letters out to parents to take the time to go on from where, you know, maybe you can give them a temporary link if that's possible. I don't know, I'm not the IT expert. But I know sometimes you can get something temporarily sent to you. And then maybe they can give, you know, their input in that way so that those that don't want to come to the particular, you know, meeting or whatever, that might be an option as well.
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers. Ms. Savios?
Yeah, so just want to reiterate, I know you've heard it from a couple of us, but I want to also chime in on it. If we can make sure that there is people, that there are people trying it before it launches. I think that that's really important just to work out whatever kinks, you know, instead of like launching it and then you have people using it and then you have all of this frustration. And again, I really appreciate what Dr. Wyatt said in terms of just really making sure that you target specific, different groups of users, right? Those that know and don't know and age range and so forth. Again, I just want to say thank you. As already mentioned, I'm sure it's, you know, a lot of work and time that's gone into it. I really like the consistency across the district page and the schools' pages. That's really nice to be able to go from looking at the layout of this page and then going somewhere else and seeing the layout similar. It's really helpful. And so, and again, I'm sure that those sites are going to appreciate the fact that they're able to upload, change things on there. Because if they're not able to, we live in an era where everything's technology. And we want to make sure that they're keeping it up to date as much as possible. And if it's not easy for them to do, they're not going to and they're going to neglect it. And then, you know, it's a really powerful tool to be able to reach the community out there. So I really like that as well. And again, change is always hard, right? But the more you use it, it's one of those things that the more you use, the more you'll become familiar with. And hopefully, you know, it doesn't create such a big havoc out there. But definitely, definitely try it. Test it with different people. Make sure that you get that feedback. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Savios. Dr. Flores?
This question is for Mr. Tillman. So if they have a lot of embedded links, will our families who don't have fast Wi-Fi be able to access? Or will, because they probably don't have upgraded computers. So will they be able to access our website because it's now? It won't slow it down? No, no, it won't slow it down? Okay, so.
The type of things that slow sites down would be like video?
Video, okay, okay. So it won't, they'll have equal access even though they have old computers?
Well, this is WordPress or something like that? Is it using WordPress?
No, it's not using WordPress. I can, I do not know the specifics, the technical specifics about it. Yeah, but I know that, I know based on any kind of device, the load times are simultaneous.
That's the other thing I'm assuming, I didn't ask the question. I'm assuming that it's going to be tested on Androids and iPads and iPhones so that it works on mobile devices too, right?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Tillman. It's been tested on all devices and it's all responsive.
And our parents' devices as well?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So my next question, or not a question, it's support of what Mr. Tillman said. I think because they're used to have, using the icons in our old website, it's real important to make sure we use them again. Because otherwise, because our brains seek patterns, they're used to that pattern. I think Ms. Savios also said that. I concur with him. And, you know, I mean, you'll get feedback, right? You're still going to go through getting feedback. And then also what Mr. Tillman said, don't rush it. Make sure that it's solid, make sure that it's workable. You've, you know, worked out all the kinks. I know you still won't work out them all out once we launch it and so forth. But just, you know, and I know you're in a, I know you set the, how did you set the deadline? You just set a deadline?
Yes.
Also have to be very reasonable, right? In terms of, you may have to extend the deadline.
Okay.
Make sure that, I mean, and we're not, we want you to do great, you know? And we want you, and we want it to be the best, so.
Part of the reason for the deadline that we set has to do with the expiration of our existing platform's contract. So we'll just have to extend that contract if we're going to.
For a few months.
Push that, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
That's a great point. That's the thing to do. So you don't have a, you don't have a deadline.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And then, actually, I was going to comment on what Dr. Flores and Mr. Tillman said. Yeah, don't rush it, right? We don't, we don't need to rush it. Let's finish it when it's ready, take your time and do it right. Yeah, I agree. Don't pigeonhole yourself. What we're saying you have is a deadline, you're getting nervous because you can't meet that deadline and have it hopefully just the way we want it, right? I know that's a tall ask, but, I'm going to ask for another tall ask. But the chatbot that you talked about, I mentioned it quite frequently because when I got to go to DC, I saw amazing things. And one of them was the AI feature. So if that chatbot could be part of our AI feature, that would be absolutely amazing. But maybe also can that AI adapt? Like if it's a question for a student, maybe a student responds. Or, you know, maybe a question for staff that one of our, like somebody by the teacher could respond. I don't know, I'm just wondering. I don't know what's possible and what's not. But some of the things that I saw was happening, I would think in regards to AI and what we're talking about, pretty much anything's possible. But I don't know what that price tag is either because AI is new and it could be very expensive, so. Yeah, I don't want us to have this $10 million website just because Scott said, I like that one, but. But yeah, no, but I thought AI, when you talk about chatbots, one thing like, you know, you go in, how can I help you tonight? Ms. Antivelo, oh, you know, I got a question about my credit card. And it's just a chat back and forth with typing. But if we could have like a, some sort of interface with that AI, an experience, right? Not just going to our site, but have an experience of our site and somebody going, just saying, wow, that was the coolest thing ever. When I went on Samir's Seniorified School District site, I had this AI conversation. It was just nuts. But that's where we're at. If you want my opinion, we talk about 25th century learning in our Framework for Excellence that we've talked about time and time again. That's what we should be aiming for.
Dr. Wyatt, Dr. Rogers had a good point. Because once the person realizes this is not a person, they're not getting their answer. The most frustrating thing is not to be able to talk to a real person. So it has to be where you have a handoff.
I agree. No, I agree.
Well, we have to provide the resources. And if it's, we're not going to provide 24/7, which we probably won't. At least if they're on it at night, you tell them this is the number. You can call in the morning to reach somebody. But you have to be able to give them a point of contact. Once they realize they're talking to a computer and they're mad now.
At no, Mr. Vice President Tillman, I agree. There's nothing better than a person. No robot or AI can replace us, even though we are replaceable. But, but no, I agree. Last thing I ever want to hear when I call a company is listen to voicemail, voice chat or press 1, 8, 9, and then 11 and 12 and ABC option. You're right. So a person is always great, but whatever we can do to have that handoff where the AI says, you know, I'm at my limit now, we're going to try to hook you up with somebody else. That's real, not me, right? Make it a little fun. All right, sorry, I know, I'm getting excited about, it's actually pretty cool. All right, well, thank you. We will move on. Thank you, folks. You're getting me a little excited because I like the nerdy stuff like that. That's fun. All right, I think we are, let me move around here. Mandated policy revisions, 8.1. Mandated policy revisions, let me just, do we need to read that there a little bit? Let me see. The districts in the process of updating board policies that do not reflect the latest mandated state and federal law language. In order to facilitate the approval and adoption process, policies submitted with only mandated language revisions do not require going through the policy subcommittee and can be adopted on the first reading. When these policies are submitted for adoption, they will be listed under category mandated policy revisions. All the revised policies will continue to go through the policy subcommittee for review and brought to the board for discussion under category board policies, bylaws, discussion, first reading. If no changes are required, they can be, they too can be adopted on a first reading or if needed, brought back as a second reading and adoption when changes are made. Is that new or has that always been existing? It's the same? Oh, okay. So we can't pass on that first read? Amended, on an amended policy. All right. Okay. Thank you. I don't think that's an action item, right? Is it? No? I just want to make sure. All right, revision to board policy 6158, independent study.
Yes, sir. So this was an item that was on a previous agenda. We pulled it because there was additional information that we needed to consider. So we did convene the board subcommittee. Board subcommittee reviewed it, asked questions and approved it to move to the next step, which is for board approval.
Moved? It's been moved and property second, any other discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Let's continue to move forward. 9.0 reports, comments, 9.1 board members. And let's see who we'll be starting with. Ah, Vice President Tillman. Then we'll move to the left and come back around. Mr. Tillman?
I don't have any comment.
Outstanding, great comments. Ms. Savios?
Just really quickly, just, you know, I want to thank everybody for tonight. It's been nice and smooth. So I appreciate that. I also want to commend, there's been a couple of times here where, you know, parents come up and, you know, share their concerns. And there's a staff, I don't know tonight, if that staff was like part, you know, just working or if they were just here for the meeting or what have you. But it was something that they could help with. So I really appreciate, again, making that quick connection, taking care of the situation right there and then. There's another concern about, you know, one of the parents talking about issues with reimbursement of her mileage or something like that. I saw Dr. Rodriguez over here typing her little heart away. I believe that she was sending emails to, you know, address that right away. So again, it's that type of timeliness that I really, really do appreciate. Staff's response to, you know, last board meeting that we were here. I also talked about the concern about the jungle over there by Arroyo Valley, you know, immediately. Again, Dr. Rodriguez and Mr. Vatier moved really quickly to make sure that they contacted the city. And, you know, there's been some cleanup. There's still a little bit more that needs to happen, in my opinion, some more tree trimmings. But I understand that this is private property. So who knows? We may, I may need to pay a visit to city council about that because it was really important to me. Like I said, I walked over and it was just, but anyway, I really do appreciate and thank, again, in the spirit of Dr. Flores's motivational speech today, just really want to take the time to commend all of you on the promptness. And, you know, those things don't go unnoticed. So thank you. Also, the young man that was here about the cars, you know, how Mr.? Yeah, Mr. Precy, you know, again, was very active on that. So just, again, just wanted to kind of point that out and just say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savios. We'll move over to Dr. Daddy Flores. Oh, Dr. Daddy Rogers, boy, I'm sorry. I married the two of them all without you guys noticing it. So they're both doctors and why not? All right, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Combine it together, okay. All right, I want to start off first and say I want to commend the board for the AB2774. That was huge. That's important. And we will be a part of the process. A few people have texted me already. So, you know, we thank the board, we thank the staff, we thank for the support because we don't get those opportunities all the time. But we've always, like I said earlier, we've been on the forefront of those type of things. But it was, I understand it was busy. I also want to commend one of our staff, Amy, I want to say it right, Brinkerhoff. I got invited, I had no idea what it was to an event that was taking place. It's called Helping One Woman. And it's been going on for quite some time. And what happens if a woman is facing a challenge? This particular person that we're celebrating that night had her home burnt down. And they came together, they do an event for them and everything from the event goes to that person. And I got a chance to meet that particular lady that had that loss. And it was just, just such a great thing to know that our staff is participating and things like that. And my understanding is she's been doing it for years and gone unnoticed. So it's called Helping One Woman. And I told her I was definitely going to shout that out. I also spoke, had the opportunity to speak to someone from our Park and Recs had reached out and upcoming on October the 8th, they're going to have a festival day at Seekum Lake. And they want, and this staff may be able to help with this, but they would like to give volunteer opportunities to our staff. So I don't know who they need to reach out to, but I want to find that out. Ginger, you're looking at me, so it's usually you. But they're, they're really excited about it. They've done some work over there and they're trying to bring families back out again. So they're going to have a big day. So I said I would share that. Then I also got a chance to speak to some of our, you know, our staff. And I said I would bring this up. So I'm going to go through the list of the things that I captured. They shared with me that it, our hiring seems to be a little bit slow. But then when I thought about that the other day, when I talked about that compared to what happened tonight, I commend, you know, Dr. Funches and what he's doing. Things, I think things are slow because just where we are, what's going on and what's happening. But I hope that they are happy to see that we are doing those things and to continue to share, you know, where we're missing. We definitely want to do that. I'm sitting here and Ms. Rosales Medina and Rosales Medina and others are freezing, right? So, but, but my next comment is they were concerned, I guess we had some air conditioning challenges. And hopefully, facilities has looked at that as well. But, you know, I'm ashamed to say it because here I am saying I'm cold, but that was a concern. They also wanted to know about busing and we're going to talk about late start again. I know that's going to be coming up sooner than we think. So if we can please, please let us know, you know, where that task force is. Also, the inner district, I've spoken on this before, but apparently our inner district, you know, verbiage needs to change so that people understand that it's, it's, it's not a choice like you can choose and then it's going to happen. And I brought that up before, but I, we really need to look into that. There also was a concern that we have staff, obviously, that have students in our district. And some schools will allow them to drop off early and then others maybe not. So I would think that we need to get that kind of consistent because if they're, can't leave their kids and they're late to work and they voiced that that was a concern. So I had not heard that. Obviously, the master schedule again was another challenge. But it's the sign of the times, but it not because I know my eight years, this has continuously happened where there's an overload or an underload and, you know, however we can help as a board to resolve that as well. I was at another meeting and Christina Marquez left. But in addition to our gardens, the comment came up about the Monarch Butterfly. And there's something that you can plant within your garden so it'll attract those. So this is just food for thought to add to our plan as what we're doing with our gardens. Also, let's see. Another big thing was mental health. It was brought to my attention, and this is another one of those dream big of our staff, is that perhaps if we can have some additional PE teachers in the elementary level. And the reason for it is that apparently their planning time, which I've heard this before as well, they're challenged with their planning time. And I like the concept of PE because that mental health also connects. So if students can go back out, however you work that out, because I have no idea how you adjust those schedules. But it's a concern. And when I thought about it, I mean, they need the mental wellness and so does the student to be able to do what they need to do versus having all that on their head and mind and they can't plan. They, they can't get the grading done. They want to do that. And then lastly, it was the PE, the full day kinder classes. Full day kinder classes, I guess, used to have support. But now they're in, you know, full day again, mental wellness and being able to navigate. And there's no aides to support there. mental wellness and being able to navigate, and there's no aids to support there. They even mentioned we used to have interns at one point in time, so hopefully we can take a look at that and, you know, just know that everything that they were talking about, it just kept reminding me of mental wellness, mental wellness and help and support. And then lastly, I won't, I won't go into the mindset of trying to campaign from sitting here, but I will say this. Everyone knows that I love education opportunity to expand and still continue to lift up and be a representative for San Bernardino, city unified and wide is my desire when it comes to education, because I really love my city and the communities, and I love, you know, being able to support our families and our kids. So those are, dispel some of the concerns that are out there. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to-
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers, sorry, I was looking down. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina.
Yeah, no worries. And it is a tad, it is a tad cold, and it was even in the closed session room, where I wish, I need to bring in a sweater. But I do want to kind of bring back a subject that I had brought back, I had initially brought, I think it was many, maybe about four years ago, and it was regarding facilities contracts and and trying to make sure that within, if there was a possibility, I think back then, oh, and I forgot, John Poykert was, Poy- Poykert, yeah, he was in charge of MNO and the whole department, and so I really want to revisit the idea of these entities looking at hiring local, and maybe having a percentage of them when, as part of the submission, is that they do hire within our communities here and give opportunities for our residents here. So that was a question I asked many years ago, and I really want to see, maybe things have changed to where we can do that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. On to Dr. Barbara Flores.
I'm going to take some of her time. First of all, I would like to thank Mrs. Applegate for her work and leading us this month, and also the cabinet. I want to thank you especially because the Friday update was very thorough, and I knew it took you guys a lot of time to do that, and greatly appreciate it. And everything's organized and moving smoothly, and I just want to thank you. And I want to thank Karen Cunningham, and also Nicole Post, and Katrine Bellington, because without you guys, none of this would get done. It's a lot, and just greatly appreciate it. Just, you know, we all appreciate you very much, and you don't get enough, you just sit there quietly, take notes and do whatever, but you really are doing a great job, so thank you so much. Greatly appreciate it. And then, so now, I'd like to follow up with Ms. Medina as well, and also with Dr. Rogers, because I have this on my, on my board comments. I would like to agendize, if I get consensus, for us to look at, or have the policy committee look at the reason that it's not in our facilities contracts or our modernization contracts, is it because we don't have a policy? So we need to look into the policy, and also, you know, are we going to hire a union so that our workers in the area can come and work locally? Those are issues that we have to address as a board. And the only way we can do it is to research and also look how other districts do it, or, you know, look at a policy.
Community College, actually, San Bernardino Community College passed something many years ago.
You have a policy?
They added some language, so I know Mr. Solins is looking into it, actually.
Is he?
I spoke with briefly-
Okay, so we, but as a subcommittee, then we could bring it forth, so we can officially vote on it. Secondly, I've been getting also comments from teachers about burnout and that they need time to plan. And your suggestion, Dr. Rogers, was very good in terms of providing, you know, PE, because everybody would benefit, would be win-win, and at least teachers could get two days, what is it, an hour, 50 minutes, that they could have a week so that they could, you know, have a, to plan. And the next issue, which I support, is combo classes. I recall that we, we approved in the LCAP that we would not have combo classes. And the reason I am such a stickler with that is our kids are behind, and so what if we have 27 kids in a fourth grade, or fifth grade, or sixth grade? The teachers need to have time to work with them. And, you know, I just think that we should, if we have the funds, and I know we do, because I remember we put, set aside funds to not have combo classes. And we did say it, I mean, for dual language, but I think it should apply to everybody. I, I saw in the Friday update that, you know, regarding the $500 for each teacher for supplies, and I would like to see when that will be done, because it says we are preparing to distribute, but I didn't see when, a deadline, or, you know, because school's already started. So we need to, we need to, well, you do, not we. You need to, you know, distribute it, and I believe it's coming from district funds and not site funds. So that's, that's important. I also have been getting complaints about not all sites, some sites not being clean. And I did send some, a couple of messages to, or one, to Ms. Applegate and Mr. Solins. And I think, board, we have to revisit the policy of oversight at the sites, of oversight at the sites of custodians, because they are not, right now, it went to central, but it's the principal that should be in charge of them, not somebody who doesn't see them every day, because they need to be directed to go clean things. So I would like to revisit that policy and get input from the union members as well, and also the principals. I, I was also, some teachers approached me, and they said, you know, we have projectors with bulbs that, that don't work, so it's, and and because we're getting these smart whatever TVs, they're not ordering the bulbs. Well, that, that doesn't make sense. They need the bulbs. So why don't we provide the bulbs? We have the money, just provide the bulbs for them. And they don't have to scrounge around or spend their own money to buy the bulbs. I, that's ridiculous, and they need to use that, so anyway, that's one thing. And then, I know that you were, I did raise it last time, but I really would like to look, I really would like some feedback for transportation for IB lottery students at Chavez Middle School. I mean, that was something that I requested last time. How much would it cost? You know, who are they? Where are they? You know, you know, why don't they get it? Because it's an issue of equity. It's an issue of equity, because I think Richardson and Rodriguez Prep kids are bussed. Then lastly, I concur with Dr. Rogers. We need to form Late Start Task Force immediately, and also be inclusive of all the stakeholders that are going to participate. Teachers at all levels, principals, parents, because it's going to impact them, so, and of course, a couple of us on there as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. All right. I'll look at the clock and make sure I am within my time as well. Yeah, you went over, but actually, within the time of four people, just kidding, Dr. Flores, I was within one and point two-three. All right, just for me, I had a meeting with, of course, ICUC, and a number of our students from a number of our high schools, and, you know, they always want to talk about wellness centers, wellness centers, and we had that talk as a board as well, and what we can do and can't do in our timeline, you know, and I was very thorough about explaining to them that, of course, we want these wellness centers at all our high schools. However, when you work with DSA, Department of State Architects, I explained to them about them, and I won't say how slow they are, but how thorough they are. It takes time, as in years, and of course, we'd love to do that at all our high schools, like, as fast as we can, but that is not reality. They were great about that conversation, very understanding. But what we did talk about is we could control what we can control and do what we can right now, and again, I know we're looking at that at all our schools, you know, whether it's a wellness room, a calming room, a calming center, resource center, wherever you want to call it. There are things we can do at our schools, and if, obviously, our schools need money to help them do that, then we should do that. And that should be at all of our schools, but we can't have a wellness center at every one of our high schools as fast as we'd like. It is our goal. You know, the conversation was really in Essex to start with wellness, but then it ended with COVID. COVID practices and policies, and, you know, I went around and asked each student for each high school, you know, what are some of your biggest concerns? Because it wasn't really on the agenda what we were talking about, and I asked them about COVID, and it was interesting that the response they had was, you know, some inconsistencies in our practices. And so I think that's important, that we are very consistent with our practices, because, you know, when you're hearing it from students, and this was not scripted or prompted in any way, it was actually quite spontaneous. They had consistent concerns, and one of the biggest ones was exposure notification. Like if they were exposed to a person that may have had COVID and not hearing in a timely manner, so I want to make sure that, you know, we are doing that, that's important that they know. I know there may have been some changes on exposure notifications, but let's find out what that was, and ensure we're doing that consistently. I know I get them at work almost daily, but that's how it's supposed to be. And then making sure we have all our EPGs, PPGs, however you want to call them in place, our thermal scanner readers, our hand sanitizers, wipes, whatever they may be, so that those are readily available for our students, because again, that came from students at all but one of our high schools. So that was really good feedback from them, so thank you to them for letting us know. I'd just like to have a student board member update on our process and how we are going to select student board members. Also, met with a number of our family engagement staff, and I just want to say thank you for their motivation and strong desire to support all of our schools and our families at all of our schools. I think it's important that we emphasize that, all schools, not just some, and I know that's what they're ready to do. Board member pics, I know we have asked, for those who are super excited about whether we're on our new webpage or not, you know, and we need to have that little section and get our new pictures up there. Some of you may want new pictures, some of you may not, depending on how COVID has had an impact on you these last couple of years. I know for me, it might not look as good, that is for sure, but at least I have an honest picture up there. Smart TVs for our students and staff, heard some comments about that this evening, and, you know, I will just say this, there should be one in every classroom at every school, and if there weren't any, great, and if there were those old-school projectors with the bulbs, they are smart boards per se. I'm glad that we're modernizing and updating on our technology, because it's long overdue. You know, I've actually talked with folks, our teachers and our collective bargaining units, as well as our students, and they're excited about it, and they actually want it. That is a tall task. I heard the dollar amount, I couldn't believe when I heard the dollar amount what it was. So I know that's not going to happen quickly, because just to put in that many TVs, Mr. Solins, you might be able to give us a number of how many smart TVs that is, but that's a lot of TVs. But again, it goes back to what I was talking about in regards to 21st, 25th, not 21st, you were talking about 21st just a little bit ago, 21st century learning, and really striving to give our kids and our staff the best and most current technology available for learning, so they could be competitive in the global market. I think that's huge as well. And let me see, there was another update I wanted to give, and I do pause, I'm not going to give it today, because there is some more information to be reviewed. I will just say this in regards to our CAPS contract review report. We should have fairness for our view for all vendors, all vendors, and when I say all vendors, not six vendors, which, you know, was a minimal scope of review, and I know we had to start somewhere, but when we look at all vendors, we need to look at the big picture and everyone, and that did kind of come up again tonight. But I want to make sure that's what we talk about, is the scope of looking at all vendors, and that is my comments for tonight. Vice President Tillman?
President, I just want to make sure that we know that board members have said a lot tonight, and said what they would like to see happen, but there's a process for that, right? Because-
Yes, sir.
A lot of those things that were talked about cost a whole bunch of money. We'd have to have it agendized to move forward on some of the items that were mentioned. So just because somebody said that we're going to eliminate all combo classes, doesn't mean it's going to happen tomorrow. It would come back to the board, be agendized, and we have the discussion on what the costs are, as we had in the past, but I agree, you know, anything is possible, but we'd have to come back to the board as an item, and then we would give direction.
Yes, sir, and, you know, I think we're getting a lot better at that, Vice President Tillman, about asking for consensus and really working together on our concerns, and sometimes there are individual concerns that are brought up, and we need to get consensus from the board and move forward on them.
I just use that as an example, because we brought up a whole bunch of items tonight.
There may be some items, if we didn't ask for consensus, we may have to.
And some of the stuff we brought up are items that have to be negotiated also, because that's a whole nother area. So I just want to make sure that we all are in agreement that just because we say what we want as individuals or board members, doesn't mean that that's going to happen.
And a great point, Vice President Tillman, I think sometimes our board comments, we make comments, you know, this is what I'd like, but that doesn't mean it gets agendized, and if we need to ask for consensus, you know, let's remind each other-
That's what I wanted to ask, we forgot to ask for consensus.
So if there were a couple of items that were mentioned tonight that you are interested in having consensus, I think we can take the time to do that right now.
And so-
Dr. Daddy Rogers?
Yes, on the PE, and I know it wasn't something that we can say yes to right now, so if that is a process that we can put on there for, because it would require hiring more PE.
But that's a negotiated item.
Right, and so that's what, I know that's something that falls into that category of conversations, so I'm putting it out there, but it's a negotiation piece.
Dr. Funches?
Dr. Funches.
In closed session, right?
And then the other thing was a policy look at, and that's the policy committee.
And Ms. Rosales Medina?
And I had made with request to what San Bernardino Community College did many years ago with regards to the amount of percentages of, with local hire, and then, of course, kind of similar to with the PLA and so forth. But I know that you're looking into it, at least gives us a scope of what that, if that's even a possibility. I'm asking for consensus, but the thing is that, is this something that doesn't need it, just because we're reviewing to see if it's possible?
I heard you asking for information from Mr. Solins.
Right, right, so that's-
After the information, if you wanted to agendize it, we would.
Okay, yes, and so I was just trying to clarify, thank you.
Ms. Rosales Medina, for those of folks out there that don't know what PLA is. Because I don't know what it is, I'm one of those persons.
I know, and it just slipped. So it is, yeah, project labor agreements, and so it's just, so what Community College they did, they passed this, I would say, back in 2014. And so they looked at all of the contracts that go through the school district. They have, you know, the project labor agreements within them, and so they also look at making sure that a certain percentage are local hire as well within the region, within the area, within the city.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, learned something new tonight. Dr. Flores?
Tillman, which ones do I need to ask for consensus?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page, that all the things that we said-
Right, right.
The district needs to do, we're not doing them, because, right? I don't want Anna to say tomorrow that all the hundreds of combo classes are going to go away, and somehow we're going to find hundreds of millions of dollars to pay for it. We're not saying that, right?
No, but in terms of combo classes, we already approved the LCAP for that, for the combo classes. So I just want to update on it. And then, what about revisiting policy for oversight of site custodians?
An negotiable item? That might be, no? Dr. Funches?
I'll defer to Dr. Funches, that's not a policy, that is a change in-
But what we've done, we did negotiate to make sure that we worked with CSEA to get the custodians where they are now under the supervision of MNO. If we wanted to revisit that, I'm sure we can bring back some information and then re-engage with CSEA on that.
So do I need consensus for that?
I would think you would need some type of consensus that you want that information brought back.
Do I have consensus?
Bring it back for us to discuss with information, without, I don't know.
Discuss, let's be very clear here.
And so while you're asking, the kinder, the full-day kinder and adding supports there, how will, how will that, how will we be able to know that?
I would, I would assume that we need to make sure that we look at our kindergarten classrooms and provide the board with an update on which sites may have, or which classrooms may have aids, which ones may not. Give you that information, so you can have discussion about that. Or information, then, okay. Or information then, okay.
Information, okay.
All right, folks. Well, good. And thank you again for your comments. And, you know, sometimes we get a little bit off here, but it's important that we understand process and we work together. And I think we're getting a little bit better at that. So, and I will say this, it was very hot in closed session. So, you know, yes, the air is messed up. I had to take out my coat, and I am glad it's cold out here. So sorry, ladies. That might be my fault. No, I'm just kidding. All right, let's move on to 9.2, administrators in charge. Oh, Mr. Tillman, did you go?
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't want to make you look, pointing at you. You were first. All right, 9.2, administrator in charge and staff.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Wyatt. And Ms. Abios, I just wanted to say thank you that you noticed that was a deliberate effort by cabinet for us to be more responsive to our community needs. So we have now committed to having one of our directors from all the different divisions attend every board meeting during public comment so that they can be readily available to assist and point them in the right direction.
Outstanding.
So in that was in response, we want to provide great customer service. So thank you for noticing. So I do want to give a little update on what's happening around our district because I want to thank the board and commend you for keeping us on track with, on our students and being focused on our students. And it has been a very smooth last couple of board meetings, and I thank you for that. And I'm sure Dr. Rodriguez will also thank you when she takes the helm. So first thing is, Dr. Rodriguez and her team did coordinate a special clinic to provide sports physicals for our middle school students. More than 200 students were seen by physician volunteers, and we provided that in partnership with UCR. Those screenings were free for our families. So we're thankful for that. We also heard loud and clear that we need more preschool opportunities for our low-income families. And so I know that Dr. Rodriguez is also working to support our families. And for the public watching, we want to make sure that they know that our preschool is open at no or low cost to eligible families. We'll be promoting the opportunity to help our little scholars as much as we can. Anyone interested can get information from our district website or call the child development office for more information. I do want to pass kudos to the human resources department. They were featured in an article that CTA put out in the California Educator, really touting our district program around our new teacher training. So thank you to Dr. Funches and his team. They do a fantastic job of really preparing our teachers. And I know Ms. Morgan Pelletera, Ms. Mary Pierce, Shanna Smith, his people are just doing a fantastic job preparing our teachers. So thank you for that. We also wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday at Arroyo Valley, in collaboration with the Pure Land Foundation Food Distribution Program, we're going to be providing more food for our families. So they've done a wonderful job in helping us serve our families. So we want to let everybody know we're going to have that at Pacific High School this Saturday. We're grateful to their commitment to our district to serve our families. And Dr. Rodriguez and Ms. Ontiveras will be there to represent our cabinet. So please make sure that if you're available, you come by and take advantage of that. I also wanted to tout our Black Honor Roll. So board members, if you're not going to the Pure Land Foundation Distribution Saturday, hopefully I'll see you at Injun Springs High School for our Black Honor Roll. Very proud of our scholars. That will start at 8:30. It's from 8:30 to 1:00. And so it's a large event. Thank you to Dr. Greer and to his team for putting that on, and to our District African American Advisory Council. So we're very grateful for that, and we're looking forward to that. Yes, it's this Saturday. So Mr. Solins and I will be there to represent the cabinet in this event. The next thing is, Dr. Funches also has put out a survey, an engage survey, to make sure that we get feedback from our employees on how things are going. So he's doing a great job to really create an empowered workforce. And I know that he put out this survey to get some valuable feedback on what we can do better and what is working well. So thank you, Dr. Funches, for us, for doing that for us. And our employees need to make sure that they look out for the survey and participate so that we can get that feedback. And then we also have a management conference coming for our managers, and that's at the end of the month, August 31st and September 1st. Our management team is going to get together for two days of workshops on district operational topics. Some of those will include school emergency, standard response protocol training, which is extremely important, important, we know, for safety, special education in the law, marketing your school to retain enrollment. So we're really trying to help our managers to really be leaders in a lot of these areas. Our keynote motivational message will be delivered by Dr. Richard Karanza, who has a very powerful way of encouraging staff and motivating us to work together in this work. So to allow our team to select from a variety of breakout sessions related to the unique area of operational interest, we will use the campus of the Way World Outreach Church for this event. So we're very excited about that. I also did want to give Dr. Rodriguez a shout out. I know they're going to be highlighting some CAPS before and after school programs. Can you tell us a little bit more about that, the date and the time?
Thank you, Mrs. Applegate. Yes, we will be doing our official kickoff of our CAPS, kind of similar to opening ceremonies. So we will have that on Thursday in the morning, around 7:30 to about 8:30 for an hour, just to let the public know about the programs across the district by highlighting Roosevelt and Henry Elementary Schools. And then we will do it again in the afternoon, starting between 3:00 and 4:00, so that the parents who are picking up their children will be aware of the after-school programs. And so we will be doing these events across the district in the next few weeks to really get out the information to our families.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Same schools, Dr. Rodriguez?
All schools have CAPS, but for this Thursday, for the official kickoff, we will be at Roosevelt and Henry Elementaries.
Dr. Wyatt, I wanted to clarify something with Ms. Applegate. So the food distribution will be at Arroyo this Saturday, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I wanted to just clarify because you said Pacific, that was last week, right?
No, they've done it each month at Pacific. This Saturday, it's going to be at Arroyo.
At Arroyo, okay.
Arroyo.
They have a continuing partnership with us.
Bye.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Vice President Tillman?
Yes, and I do want to give a big thanks to the assistant soup, and a special thank you to Dr. Rodriguez because I got a lot of calls from parents trying to get their students in our after-school programs and I was summarize programs. And if they hadn't gotten in, I would have been here complaining, making one of my dramatic speeches. So it's only fair that I thank you. I know it's not easy. And, you know, I had, earlier, a few months ago, I had a fellow board member say, you know, Danny always helping this one parent or this one student. But I do it because it always impacts more. To me, it's just the tip of the iceberg. When I have a parent that calls me with an issue, I've never had that parent be the only person in the same predicament. It's the only one that knew, somehow they knew my name, or had to find the phone number off the website, or talked to somebody. But there were sometimes hundreds of other students experiencing the same problem. So those, the folks you help, and you know better than I do, you've helped hundreds of people this last week because of the steps you guys have taken to ensure that we have the capacity for our students in those summarize programs and after-school programs. And I've literally seen the tears from the parents because of their gratitude. Sometimes we lose sight of the impact we have on these families. Families are struggling, and we are fortunate to have the resources to make things better for them and their students. So I appreciate the work you've all done, but especially the work you've done for me in the last couple of weeks in helping these parents, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Dr. Daddy Rogers?
I was waiting for Mrs. Applegate to mention this, but I know sometimes you don't want to talk about yourself. But we got a chance to go and support, and there were other people from the district when Congressman Aguilar came down. And I just wanted to commend, I know, Dr. Flores, you would probably want to say, but I just want to commend them. I mean, you know, they had to, you know, lights, camera, action. And, you know, Ms. Applegate, you did a great job. You didn't look nervous or anything. But it was a big highlight for us. And it's, what is it called, the community?
Safe.
Safe community. And that's funding that's anticipated for us to get, Safe Communities Act, I think is what it is. But I did want to commend because many of you all were there, and you did a great job. It was hot, but you did a good job. And I think that was a huge highlight, especially being at our wonderful school where we had tragedies take place, for him to pick it and to be there. But just want, didn't want to miss that. And I thought you might mention it, but I know you put it in the board report, but it was very small. And I don't think they knew what took place.
Yeah, it was very small. Dr. Flores?
Yes, I wanted to say that too, but my time ran out. I wanted to commend Mrs. Applegate, and Chief Paulino was also there representing us. And it was very, it was very, and Dr. Rogers was there, it was very impactful, small but impactful, and recognized us. And we are going to be getting funds. He didn't know how much, but we are, we will be getting additional funds for safety. And it was great. It was really, really great. And, you know, he's a, he's a champion for us, which I really appreciate very much. So anyway, and thank you to Ms. Applegate. She had to go first and introduce him.
That's always fun, right?
It was very, very great. Yeah, it was good.
I just want to say thank you, board, for making the transition so smooth into this seat. Next board meeting, you will see Dr. Rodriguez here. But thank you for working so well collaboratively.
Well, thank you, Ms. Applegate, and definitely Executive Cabinet. And even like last time we made the transition was so smooth, I forgot to announce it. So thank you for the reminder. I don't want to do that again. But, and then, Dr. Daddy Rogers and Dr. Flores, yes, thank you for mentioning that. I knew about, but I was not there, and I didn't really want to say it because, no, I know. And I was, I don't want to say where really was that, because I was working out of town, but it was in a very nice venue. Let me just say that. And so I do want to say thank you to Congressman Aguilar, as well as my boss, County Superintendent Ted Alejandra, you know, Dr. Daddy Rogers, Dr. Flores, Ms. Applegate, the chief, everybody that was there. That one was a kind of a tough one for me as well, though, even though I wasn't there. I kind of had to express, you know, just it was a very traumatic experience for our staff and a huge loss to our community and our staff. And, you know, gosh, it opens up those wounds sometimes when we think about it. And so, you know, thank you to everybody for bringing more resources to our county, to our district, and our area to combat school violence. Because as we all know, it hits this city a lot. And so we'll take all the resources we get. So Congressman Aguilar, thank you. All right, we'll move on to, gosh, in my screen, I don't know how to get rid of this. 10.0, action items, 10.1, approval personnel report, number three, dated August 16, 2022, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
So moved.
Safe, that's presented.
Dr. Funches, if I heard you correctly, sir.
Has presented.
All right, I heard a motion. Was there a second? All right, it's been motion.
Second.
Properly second, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. I'm trying for 10 o'clock, folks. Let's do it.
Maybe sooner.
All right, let's vote. I'll say it again. All right.
Ms. Abios, oh, there you go. Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Move on to 10.2, approval of 2022-2023 Consolidated Application Reporting System, CARs, spring submission, educational services.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion carries, move on to 10.3, 45-day revision after adoption of governor's budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Who was that one there? Was that Ms. Rosales Medina? Very good. All right, any discussion? Let's vote. Motion carries, 10.4, ratification of classified directors, master degree stipend, human resources.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's vote. All right, motion carries, 11.4, ratification of classified directors, master degree stipend, human resources.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
All right, motion carries, we'll move on to 11.0, consent items, 11.1, approval consent items.
So moved.
Second. I'd like to pull a couple. I'm sorry.
It's been moved and properly second. Discussion.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay, Dr. Flores. Go right ahead.
I'd like to pull 11.8.
11.8.
Just for clarifications and questions.
Yes, ma'am. Any others?
Yes, and I want to pull 11.19, just as I've done in the past. I am the founder of that organization, so I'm going to leave the room.
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Yes, I'm accusing myself, no financial interest here, but I will be.
11.19, thank you very much. All right, and we have any others? I believe 11.7 was pulled to bring back at another date. And then 10.3, that was something else. All right, any others to be pulled? Okay, let's go ahead and get started on those. 11, oh, wait, I'm sorry. We have to vote now on the amended consent agenda. So let's go ahead and vote.
Can you clarify who motioned and seconded it again?
We're voting on the items other than those pulled.
Right.
Who made the motion?
First motion, right?
Yeah.
It was Dr. Flores, and seconded by, I believe, Mr. Tillman. Or Ms. Abios? It was Mr. Tillman, yes. All right, thank you. So we have the motion second. The items have been, agenda's been amended, so let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, we'll move on to 11.8, award of RFP number 21-15 Interactive Television Equipment Mounts and Installation in the Amount of $19,133,442 Business Services. Dr. Flores?
Yes, Ms. Applegate and Mr. Solins, I have operational questions. Number one, are all classrooms going to be getting these televisions? Is that correct?
It's correct. Over 2,000 classrooms.
Over 2,000 classrooms, okay.
This is our standard technology package for all classrooms.
And are these going to replace the projectors that don't have light bulbs?
It will replace all of them.
It will replace the projectors. And just some background on some of those projectors, they're old projectors that we can no longer secure light bulbs for.
Oh, my God, really? So what do they use instead?
Well, there are options to replace the projectors, so we'll be looking into that and work with sites to address that.
That was my next question. What are we going to do in the meantime?
We do have some projectors.
Correct. We will, our technology staff will work with the sites to make sure that projectors, new projectors replacement.
So the teachers will be able to, who will they talk to, the principal or?
So they'll talk to the administrator.
The administrator, okay. So teachers need to let administrators know that they need, if they don't have the light bulb, they need something else. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, great. Next question is, what's the timeline to install 2,000 of these in every classroom, in the 2,000 classrooms?
So this is the initial award. So once the award is made, we will work with the vendor to establish a timeline. So we will provide the board with a timeline once that's established with the vendor.
We don't know how long it will take them to install them and all of that.
Not at this time. And just a note, you know, anytime you're putting something on a wall or opening a wall, anything, you can come across issues that sort of further delay.
So do we have enough people to do that? Do we have enough MNO, I mean?
So this is actually, not only the equipment, but the installation is being furnished by the vendor.
Oh, they are. Oh, okay. So they're providing the installation?
Correct.
That was another question. And I'm assuming there are plans for professional development to teach the teachers how to use this, right?
Of course, yes.
Okay. And my next question is, are there plans for troubleshooting? And who will troubleshoot? The IT guys at the site, or how does that happen?
We did move toward more of the cluster support. So we do have IT specialists that will do that, but each cluster also has IT specialists that can respond as well.
My next question is, will our PE teachers have equitable, equitable and equitable access to that as well? Does that, do the 2,000 classrooms include the PE teachers?
I'd have to look into that because they're designed for classrooms. So if they currently have a classroom that the site has allocated, I would imagine. But let me get some information, and I'll get back to you on that.
Now, we are paying for these, so the districts, the sites don't have to pay for them. Now, we are paying for these, so the districts, the sites don't have to pay for them, right?
Correct.
Okay, and what about, I'm assuming that they'll have, just not classrooms, but you'll probably put them in other places where they have meetings, right, as well?
Correct, this, this package is to standardize all monitors in the district. So we're, this is the initial equipment for the school sites, but the intent is that all sites that have monitors will have the identical.
Example, when they're having PD, you know, say in the auditorium or wherever, will they be able to access them there?
Yes, right now, the priority is the classroom, but then, you know, we can discuss that further for the other common areas.
All right, so, so the question was, okay, so over time, how will they be maintained? Is this company going to provide maintenance for the equipment?
So, once, once it's installed, obviously, the equipment's under warranty. But one, but in terms of the, under the warranty service, then equipment is maintained under the warranty services. Once it goes beyond that warranty life, then we would be responsible for maintaining, yeah, correct.
And what is the warranty?
I'd have to get the exact.
Okay. And if they don't, if under the warranty, that I'm assuming that if they are not functional, they have, we have a replacement plan and we don't have to pay for them?
Correct. Typical with any warranty, you, we, they would be replaced at no cost to us.
What is their lifetime?
Typically, with most technology, and Mr. Tillman can chime in, typically, you know, you're looking at four to five years, but obviously, those devices can extend. Technology moves so fast, so, but typically, most technology is about a five-year useful life.
My last question is, do we have them in some of our schools already?
I don't know that we have these exact models. We do have some screens, so for example, the Pacific High School remodel, we do have screens in there. We are looking to standardize the screens to this package. There are some, there are some monitors, perhaps not this exact model, but we do have some.
It is a lot of money, yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Vice President Tillman.
I'll just, in the proposal, there's different size monitors. I'm assuming that's because certain TVs fit certain walls and that kind of stuff?
Correct, not all classes are similar in size, so we, part of these, developing the scope was to walk site so that we could spec out the correct size for the classroom spaces.
And I hope, you know, I talked earlier with Michael, but I hope that we don't make the mistake and say, this is the standard unit and TV, and we're not going to make any exceptions for anybody else. And I say that only because I've been doing technology long enough to know that you always want to have some room for exceptions and be able to, if someone's really bought into some system, you don't want to have to say, no, you're not going to do it. The other thing, Dr. Flores, TVs don't really replace projectors. You could have a TV and a projector in the same room. And there are times that you might want to use a projector with a bigger screen, right? Because these TVs aren't as big as that. But there are times when you'd rather turn the lights off and put the projector on. So there's, and I know we're not suggesting that these TVs are going to eliminate the need for projectors, right?
And Ms. Applegate can correct me, because from an instructional standpoint, this is another tool, you know, to provide education.
So they're not replacing the projectors.
So.
When I say that, Dr. Flores, it becomes, but it becomes obvious. There are going to be some uses in the, when the teacher's in the room, they'll know when they want to have it, just the TV. There'll be other times where they say, we want to, you know, use the projector. I'm just saying that it's not automatically replaced. I only say it because I have it in my conference rooms. I have TVs on all the walls and I have a projector in the front. There's sometimes, it just becomes obvious the user wants to pull down the big screen and use the projector. Other times, they'll have, they'll have you look at the TVs.
And, and I would just add, the power of technology, it is a seven-year warranty. I just got the text message, so.
And then I agree with Mrs. Solins, the, I think the max should get out of this, five years, but, you know, it depends. You never know what happens with technology. You might have something brand new in three years, you want to swap stuff out. And I'm hoping that we're not paying extra for a warranty, just include it. And then if, because if you're going to pay money for a warranty, you're better off just buying extra TVs. Thank you very much.
All righty, any other questions or discussions?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Let's vote. All right, motion carries, we'll move on to item number 11.19, renewal of the agreement with the Young Power Women's Empowerment Foundation, Cajon High School, $15,000 Educational Services.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, discussion? Mr. Vice President Tillman, are you first? Yes?
Have we had legal counsel look to ensure that everything is okay?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I would suggest we do this as an abundance of caution, you know, just, I mean, because all the discussion that we had recently, I think it would be important just to have counsel look and say that it's okay. It's my opinion.
All righty, thank you, Vice President Tillman, Dr. Flores.
So, Mr. Tillman, can we, in terms of Roberts rules, can we table this to get our, I will retract my second, if Ms. Medina will retract her.
No, yeah, and the thing is that since we've seen this happen before where people make.
Get legal, legal counsel to let us know.
Question, and I think it's better that way, if they do come back, or anybody else comes back, we already have the legal counsel saying that there is no conflict of interest.
So I recommend, I move that we table this item.
And just for clarification, it's okay to have conflicts of interest. I know we're kind of shy because of some of the articles have been written, but the key is to make sure is what we're talking about is legal and okay to be done.
And what I'm referring to is the legal ramifications of it, and, and, yeah.
Well, apparently, yeah, we need a ruling of whether it is a conflict of interest or not.
No, it's not, that's why I was clear, it's not illegal to have a conflict of interest. We go out of the room all the time because of conflicts of interest. That's the way you handle them legally.
Oh, that's what, right, right.
This is just to say, is it legal for a board to fund a project with, that a board member is a principal of the nonprofit? That's the only question.
Glad you clarified that, thank you.
Actually, I'll defer to Ms. Abios first.
So I just want to caution also that if, if we're going to do this for this, we do it for all. And so I don't know, does that mean we go back and we look at all of the ones that we have already approved? And we, you know, do a, like a deep dive? Like, I just want to caution that it's not also perceived as we're going after one versus the other. That's just my two cents. Also, it is my understanding from even what Ms. Rogers has shared in the past, that she is not part of the organization itself. So I don't know where, but again, I welcome the inquiry. I just want to caution that we do it for all, that we don't just, you know, because then that can be perceived not well.
Thank you, Ms. Abios, and actually, that was part of my comment in regards to, you know, practice and transparency and to eliminate the thought or practice of impropriety, you know, that we, this is my opinion, that we should have a full audit of all our vendors and providers. Not just, like I said earlier, not a handful of them, regardless of the size of the contract as well. Because there are a number of us that, you know, I will speak for myself, that sit on some of the nonprofits that we award contracts to, and I recuse myself when those times come. However, I feel there should be an audit of all of them, not just some. If we're looking at the consistency, equity, and fairness, that's what we should be doing. And that the audit and the information presented is accurate and comprehensive, without faulty or misinformation or errors. You know, we need accuracy in what we do because it's important for the community to see. And I know this board, we want to be transparent and we want to be held accountable. And at the same time, we want to provide services to our students, which I think at the end of the day, is the most important thing, is that our students receive the services. So that's my comment on this, and I'll leave it at that. Vice President Tillman.
I think it's, it's critical that we use a reputable company. Not a company that was established two months ago, but a reputable company that we have confidence in can give us legal advice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman, Dr. Flores.
Mr. Tillman, just to clarify, when you say company, you mean a legal firm? Okay, all right. So a reputable legal firm to give us advice on this, okay, thank you.
I think Mrs. Rosales Medina, is that correct?
And I only, and I'm only, because I, from, you know, and I personally want to be fair because just as people made accusations for others, I have, you know, through that, know that it's not true. In this case, I know, you know, she's not collecting, she's not getting any financial benefits from it as well as how she's, you know, removing herself of the room. But we want to make sure that at least on any of these organizations, they have this, this, their consciousness, everything's cleared in the public's eye, so that way, it just shows that, you know what, we're not trying to hide anything. If, you know, if there's a group that comes forward and makes accusations, we're going to do an investigation to make sure that. And we already know it's not, it's not the case, but since, we just want to make sure that they, you know, we're able to defend it. And I think it benefits them as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosales Medina. So just, you know, for the record, and so I'm accurate, there was a motion to move forward and approve, then there was a second, then there was a discussion, and then.
Discuss it.
Yeah, or discuss, excuse me, there was a motion to discuss.
Yeah. We had to do, excuse me, clarification. We had to make a motion and a second for us to be able to even discuss it.
Okay, and was there a point of order of the change, of the amended motion or retracted motion, I would say?
Yes, there was a point of order to, to table the item so that we can get legal counsel to look at the, this, could you repeat what you said, Mr. Tillman, so that legal counsel could?
Look at the circumstances and the contract and make sure that it's in good standing.
Right.
It's in good standing.
All right, and I'll defer upon Mr. Solon, this one, is that appropriate action, that we could do that? Table it?
Yeah, the, there can be a motion made and seconded to table and, or, yeah, table the item, so yes.
We need a, we need a motion to table it.
Move to table the item?
Second.
Any discussion, any more discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. What do you need, Ms. Cunningham?
Verbalize it.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Well, then we need, we need to start individually. We'll start with Ms. Abios.
So can you just clarify for me what a yea and a nay would represent?
Yea is going to represent.
Tabling it?
Tabling it.
Okay, so, so nay.
Yea for me.
Yea.
Yea.
All right, motion carries, could we get Ms., Dr. Daddy Rogers? And we will move forward to 12.0, review of board requests. 12.1, staff review items, updates requested.
Thank you, good evening again, and here are the items that I captured throughout the meeting. There were two public comments where there was clearly a request for us to follow up on them. One was specifically in the request for the mother who wanted to enroll her child in middle school, and I know that that may have been handled on the spot. But that was requested that we would share the outcome of that by Myris Abios, Dr. Flores, Mr. Tillman, and Dr. Wyatt all asked for that. Dr. Flores asked that we would follow up on Ms. Negretti's request about how technology was going to impact student outcomes in line with the ESAR fund requirements for the purchase of the interactive TVs. Then into the meeting, Mr. Danny Tillman, also Dr. Barbara Flores, and Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina, during the website update, asked that we would add more prominent Board of Education links to the homepage, similar to how they are on the current existing site. Also, in the website review, Dr. Flores and Dr. Wyatt asked that we would consider an interactive element like a chatbot that hands off to a live person if necessary. Dr. Gwen Rogers suggested that we make the contact information easily accessible, especially the phone number, so that families and users could find that quickly. Dr. Wyatt and Ms. Abios and Dr. Rogers asked that we would also consider allowing a variety of stakeholders to test the site before we launch that. Mr. Tillman and Dr. Flores can, suggested that we consider pushing that launch date out to allow more time for development of the website. Dr. Rogers, sorry, I have to move up my scroll here. Dr. Rogers asked that we would, and Dr. Flores asked that we would provide an update on planning for the late start and relaunch the task force to get ready for next year. Then Dr. Rogers asked that we would update language on inter-district transfers and requests and how we process those on our website. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that we would look into the inconsistency of drop-off times from school to school. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that we would consider including monarch butterflies in the school gardens and also.
Ginger, on that, where you missed, you said school to school?
Yes.
But it's staff is where the concern is. Did you capture that? That when they're dropping their kids off, it's staff? So at some schools, they may have a relationship because they work for the district, so they drop their child off at the school? So it's staff. It's schools, the schools, but it's staff.
Or staff specifically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's staff, it's a staff concern.
Okay. So I did, I added that to that particular request. Then Dr. Rogers asked that we would consider, and this is how I usually capture these, is consider adding PE teachers to elementary schools and consider adding support for our full-day kender teachers, such as aides or interns. Dr. Rogers echoed by Abigail Rosales Medina, asked that we would look into adjusting the temperature in the BOE so that it was more consistent and comfortable. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina and Dr. Flores asked that we would consider how we might encourage contractors to hire local labor and/or union labor through, through a policy decision. Dr. Flores asked that we would provide a date by which the teacher's supply budget was going to be released. Dr. Flores also asked that we look into consistency in the custodial support and consider returning supervision to the site leader, getting input from the union and also our principals in that decision. Dr. Flores asked for, I think this was a second request, to consider transportation for IB lottery students that are attending at Chavez. Dr. Wyatt asked that we would look into inconsistency in COVID practices, especially related to exposure notifications and PPE provision. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would update the process, update the board on the process for the appointment of student board members. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would update the photos, I think, in our schools of the, of the board member photos. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would update on the status of a reduction of combo classes in, that were approved in the LCAP. And then just in this recent action, there was a request for a legal review of contracts when we have board members who are affiliated with organizations, so.
And Ginger, so a question on the kender, did you speak about, did you, did you capture that? That they wanted to explore additional staff support in the kender? And then the plant that I couldn't remember, it was called Milkweed for the monarch. And then the plant that I couldn't remember, it was called Milkweed for the monarch butterfly.
Monarch butterfly, thank you.
In there, yeah.
Thank you.
But they just reminded, thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Alrighty, folks, we have a motion to adjourn, second. Everyone have a fantastic evening. We did a lot better, 10:04 or so, but we'll aim to do better next time. Everyone have a fantastic evening and may you have safe travels home. God bless you all.